The House will come to order. Prayer by the Chaplain.
Let us pray. To you, almost loving and gracious one, who is the ground of our being, thank you for these public servants who have committed themselves to governing our state in these trying times. As they work together, please keep them safe, preserving both their physical and emotional health. Be with them, giving wisdom this day as they face the mandate and unenviable task to enact laws and regulations that reflect the sanctity and inherent worth of all people. Laws that will indeed foster an environment where every citizen, whether young or old, can flourish economically, physically, socially, and spiritually. And though we are ever grateful for the privilege of being able to respectfully disagree, let the political challenges that they face be superseded by their genuine commitment to serve the people with a humble and listening spirit and by their own human hearts and minds. Finally, as they work together today and in the future, may their efforts be blessed with deep insight and open-mindedness so that by working together, they find a common ground, enabling them to move forward with a shared purpose, guided by listening to each other and the sincere intention of doing their best work for the people of the state of Minnesota. This is our sincere prayer. Amen.
The Chaplain for today is the Reverend Denise Dunbar Perkins, retired minister from Presbyterian Church of the Twin Cities. Pledge of Allegiance. Please remain standing and recite the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The clerk will take the role. Members, be reminded to state your name clearly, your location clearly, and present. Please reduce any background noise.
Acom.
Acom, Minnetonka, present.
Acom, Minnetonka, present. Albright. Albright, St. Paul, present. Anderson.
Anderson, Barstow Township, present.
Anderson. Barstow Township, present. Becker.
Becker, Browns Valley, present.
Becker, Browns Valley, present. Bonner.
I have, I have.
Bonner, St. Paul, present.
Bonner, St. Paul, present. Barr.
Barr, East Bethel, present.
Barr, East Bethel, present. Baker.
Present. Baker Spicer, present.
Baker Spicer, present. Becker Finn. Becker Finn, St. Paul, present. Bennett.
Bennett, Albert Lee, present.
Bennett, Albert Lee, present. Bernardi.
Bernardi, St. Paul, present.
Bernardi, St. Paul, present. Bierman.
Thank you.
Bierman, St. Paul, present.
Bierman, St. Paul, present. Bowe. Bowe, St. Paul, present. Brand.
Brand, St. Paul, present.
Brand, St. Paul, present. Cantrell.
Cantrell, Savage, present.
Cantrell, Savage, present. Carlson A.
Carlson A, Bloomington, present.
Carlson A, Bloomington, present. Carlson L.
Carlson L, St. Paul, present.
Carlson L, St. Paul, present. Christiansen.
Christiansen, St. Paul, present.
Christiansen, St. Paul, present. Claflin.
Claflin, St. Paul, present.
Claflin, St. Paul, present. Considine.
Considine, Mankato, present.
Considine, Mankato, present. Daniels.
Daniels, Fairbolt, present.
Daniels, Fairbolt, present. Dowd. Dowd, St. Paul, present. Davids.
Davids, Preston, present.
Davids, Preston, present. Daveney.
Daveney, St. Paul, present.
Daveney, St. Paul, present. Dean.
Dean, St. Paul, present.
Dean, St. Paul, present. Damuth.
Damuth, Cold Spring, present.
Damuth, Cold Spring, present. Detmer.
Detmer, Forest Lake, present.
Detmer, Forest Lake, present. Treskowski. Treskowski, St. Paul, present. Eklund.
Eklund, International Falls, present.
Eklund, International Falls, present. Edelson.
Edelson, Edina, present.
Edelson, Edina, present. Elkins.
Elkin, St. Paul, present.
Elkin, St. Paul, present. Ericson.
Ericson, Princeton Township, present.
Ericson, Princeton Township, present. Fabian.
Fabian, Rojo, present.
Fabian Rojo, present. Fisher.
Fisher, St. Paul, present.
Fisher, St. Paul, present. Franzen.
Franzen, Alexandria Township, present.
Franzen, Alexandria Township, present. Freiberg.
Freiberg, Golden Valley, present.
Freiberg, Golden Valley, present. Garofalo.
Garofalo, Farmington, present.
Garofalo, Farmington, present. Gomez.
Gomez, St. Paul, present.
Gomez, St. Paul, present. Green.
Green, Foston, present.
Green, Foston, present. Gressel.
Gressel, Clearbrook, present.
Gressel, Clearbrook, present. Grunhagen.
Grunhagen, Glencoe, present.
Grunhagen, Glencoe, present. Gunther.
Gunther, Fairmount, present.
Gunther, Fairmount, present. Haley.
Haley, Redwing, present.
Haley, Redwing, present. Halverson. Halverson, St. Paul, present. Hamilton.
Hamilton, Mountain Lake, present.
Hamilton, Mountain Lake, present. Hanson.
Hanson, St. Paul, present.
Hanson, St. Paul, present. Hassan.
Hassan, Minneapolis, present.
Hassan, Minneapolis, present. Hausmann.
Hausmann, St. Paul, present.
Hausmann, St. Paul, present. Heinrich.
Heinrich, Anoka, present.
Heinrich, Anoka, present. Heinzmann.
Heinzmann, Nisswa, present.
Heinzmann, Nisswa, present. Herr. Herr.
Herr, St. Paul, present.
Herr, St. Paul, present. Hertas.
Hertas, Greenfield, present.
Hertas, Greenfield, present. Hornstein.
Hornstein, Minneapolis, present.
Hornstein, Minneapolis, present. Howard.
Howard, St. Paul, present.
Howard, St. Paul, present. Hewitt.
Hewitt, St. Paul, present.
Hewitt, St. Paul, present. Johnson.
Johnson, Iyantie Township, present.
Johnson, Iyantie Township, present. Jordan.
Jordan, St. Paul, present.
Jordan, St. Paul, present. Jurgens.
Jurgens, Cottage Grove, present.
Jurgens, Cottage Grove, present. Keel. Keel. Cleavorn.
Cleavorn, St. Paul, present.
Cleavorn, St. Paul, present. Cagle.
Cagle, St. Paul, present.
Cagle, St. Paul, present. Katisa Whittoon.
Katisa Whittoon, Eden Prairie, present.
Katisa Whittoon, Eden Prairie, present. Koznick.
Koznick, St. Paul, present.
Koznick, St. Paul, present. Creshaw.
Creshaw, Little Falls, present.
Creshaw, Little Falls, present. Kunish Poudine.
Kunish Poudine, New Brighton, present.
Kunish Poudine, New Brighton, present. Lehman.
Lehman, Cohasset, present.
Lehman, Cohasset, present. Lee.
Lee, St. Paul, present.
Lee, St. Paul, present. Lesch.
Lesch, St. Paul, present.
Lesch, St. Paul, present. Liebling.
Liebling, Rochester, present.
Liebling, Rochester, present. Lean.
Lean, Moorhead, present.
Lean, Moorhead, present. Lilly.
Lilly, St. Paul, present.
Lilly, St. Paul, present. Lippert.
Lippert, Northfield, present.
Lippert, Northfield, present. Listlegard.
Listlegard, Aurora, present.
Listlegard, Aurora, present. Long.
Long, St. Paul, present.
Long, St. Paul, present. Lucero. Lucero, St. Paul, present. Luick.
Luick, Aiken, present.
Luick, Aiken, present. Mahoney.
Mahoney, St. Paul, present.
Mahoney, St. Paul, present. Mann.
Mann, Minneapolis, present.
Mann, Minneapolis, present. Ariani.
Ariani, St. Paul, present.
Ariani, St. Paul, present. Markwart.
Markwart, Dunn Township, present.
Markwart, Dunn Township, present. Mason.
Mason, St. Paul, present.
Mason, St. Paul, present. McDonald.
McDonald, Delano, present.
McDonald, Delano, present. Mecklen.
Mecklen, San Diego Township, present.
Mecklen, San Diego Township, present. Miller. Miller. Moeller.
Moeller, Shoreview, present.
Moeller, Shoreview, present. Moran.
Moran, St. Paul, present.
Moran, St. Paul, present. Morrison.
Morrison, Deep Haven, present.
Morrison, Deep Haven, present. Munson.
Munson, Lincoln Township, present.
Munson, Lincoln Township, present. Murphy.
Murphy, Hermantown, present.
Murphy, Hermantown, present. Nash.
Nash, Wilconia, present.
Nash, Wilconia, present. Nelson M.
Nelson M, St. Paul, present.
Nelson M, St. Paul, present. Nelson N.
Nelson N, Rapid City, present.
Nelson N, Rapid City, present. New. New, St. Paul, present. Noor.
Noor, Minneapolis, present.
Noor, Minneapolis, present. Nornis.
Nornis, Fergus Falls, present.
Nornis, Fergus Falls, present. Navatney.
Navatney, Elk River, present.
Navatney, Elk River, present. O'Driscoll.
O'Driscoll, Sartell, present.
O'Driscoll, Sartell, present. Olson.
Olson, Duluth, present.
Olson, Duluth, present. O'Neill.
O'Neill, Maple Lake, present.
O'Neill, Maple Lake, present. Palowski.
Palowski, Winona, present.
Palowski, Winona, present. Purcell.
Purcell, Bemidji, present.
Purcell, Bemidji, present. Petersburg.
Petersburg, Owatonna, present.
Petersburg, Owatonna, present. Pearson.
Pearson, Rochester, present.
Pearson, Rochester, present. Pinto.
Pinto, St. Paul, present.
Pinto, St. Paul, present. Poppy.
Poppy, Austin, present.
Poppy, Austin, present. Poston.
Poston, Lakeshore, present.
Poston, Lakeshore, present. Pryor.
Pryor, St. Paul, present.
Pryor, St. Paul, present. Quam.
Quam, Byron, present.
Quam, Byron, present. Richardson.
Richardson, Mendota Heights, present.
Richardson, Mendota Heights, present. Robbins. Robbins, St. Paul, present. Runbeck.
Runbeck, Circle Pines, present.
Runbeck, Circle Pines, present. Sandell.
Sandell, Woodbury, present.
Sandell, Woodbury, present. Sandsted.
Sandsted, Hibbing, present.
Sandsted, Hibbing, present. Sauk.
Sauk, Rochester, present.
Sauk, Rochester, present. Schumacher.
Schumacher, Laverne, present.
Schumacher, Laverne, present. Schultz, excused. Scott.
Scott, Andover, present.
Scott, Andover, present. Stevenson.
Stevenson, Coon Rapids, present.
Stevenson, Coon Rapids, present. Sundine.
Sundine, Thompson Township, present.
Sundine, Thompson Township, present. Swazinski.
Swazinski, Dell Rapids Township, present.
Swazinski, Dell Rapids Township, present. Tabke.
Tabke, St. Paul, present.
Tabke, St. Paul, present. Teis.
Teis, St. Cloud, present.
Teis, St. Cloud, present. Torkelson.
Torkelson, Nisswa, present.
Torkelson, Nisswa, present. Erdahl.
Erdahl, Acton Township, present.
Erdahl, Acton Township, present. Vang.
Vang, St. Paul, present.
Vang, St. Paul, present. Vogel.
Vogel, Elko, Newmarket, present.
Vogel, Elko, Newmarket, present. Wagenius.
Wagenius, Solem Township, present.
Wagenius, Solem Township, present. Waslowick.
Waslowick, St. Paul, present.
Waslowick, St. Paul, present. West.
West, Blaine, present.
West, Blaine, present. Winkler. Winkler, St. Paul, present. Wagamot.
Wagamot, St. Paul, present.
Wagamot, St. Paul, present. Zhang J.
Zhang J, St. Paul, present.
Zhang J, St. Paul, present. Zhang T.
Zhang T, St. Paul, present.
Zhang T, St. Paul, present. Yuakim.
Yuakim, Chisago County, present.
Yuakim, Chisago County, present. Speaker Hartman. Keel.
Keel, Hammond Township, present.
Keel, Hammond Township, present. Miller. Miller.
A quorum is present. The clerk will read the Journal of the preceding day.
Journal of the House, Second Special Session 2020, First Day, St. Paul, Minnesota, Monday, July 13, 2020.
If there is no objection, further reading of the Journal will be dispensed with, and the Journal will be approved as corrected by the Chief Clerk. Hearing no objection, the Journal is approved as corrected by the Chief Clerk. Reports of standing committees and divisions. A copy of this Order of Business is online. If there is no objections, the reports will be adopted. Hearing no objection, the reports are adopted. Second reading of House files.
Second reading, House File Number One. Second reading, House File Number Three.
Second reading.
Second reading, House File Number Fourteen.
Second reading.
Second reading, House File Number Thirty-three.
Second reading.
Second reading, House File Number Thirty-four.
Second reading.
Second reading, House File Number Thirty-five.
Second reading. Introduction to Bills. The following bills, the following House files have been offered for introduction today. The Chief Clerk will report the House files and give them their first reading.
Introduction, First Reading of House Files 63 through 92.
First reading. Messages from the Senate.
Message from the Senate, Madam Speaker. This is to notify you that the Senate is now duly organized for the 2020 Second Special Session. Pursuant to the Minnesota Constitution and Minnesota statute, message assigned Cal R. Ludeman, Secretary of the Senate. Message from the Senate, Madam Speaker. I hereby announce the passage by the Senate of the following Senate files transmitted. Senate File Numbers Two, Four, and Twelve. Message assigned Cal R. Ludeman, Secretary of the Senate. Message from the Senate. Madam Speaker, I hereby announce the adoption by the Senate of the following Senate Concurrent Resolution herewith transmitted. Senate Concurrent Resolution Number One, relating to Minnesota's peacetime emergency. The message assigned Cal R. Ludeman. Senate Concurrent Resolution Number... Senate Concurrent Resolution Number One is being referred to the Committee on Rules and Legislative Administration. Message from the Senate, Madam Speaker. I hereby announce the adoption by the Senate of the following Senate Concurrent Resolution herewith transmitted. Senate Concurrent Resolution Number Two. A Senate Concurrent Resolution relating to adjournment of the Senate and House until the public interest warrants reconvening. Winkler moves that the rules be so far suspended that Senate Concurrent Resolution Number Two be now considered and placed upon its adoption.
I recognize the Majority Leader, Representative Winkler.
Madam Speaker, members, this suspension of the rules and adoption of Senate Concurrent Resolution Number Two will allow us to take a break from St. Paul and come back on Monday, hopefully leaving an opportunity for us to conclude some important items of business that are essential to the public good. And so I ask for your yes vote on suspension and adoption of the resolution.
Discussion to the motion. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails.
Winkler moves that Senate Concurrent Resolution Number Three be now adopted.
Representative Winkler.
Members, please vote me in voting yes.
Any discussion to the motion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. First reading of Senate files.
First reading, Senate File Number Two, an act relating to health care. Liebling moves that Senate File Number Two and House File Number Thirty-five now on the General Register be referred to the Chief Clerk for comparison.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
First reading, Senate File Number Four, an act relating to motor vehicles. The bill is being referred to the Transportation, Finance, and Policy Division. First reading, Senate File Number Twelve, an act relating to Human Services. Cantrell moves that Senate File Number Twelve and House File Number Thirty-three now on the General Register be referred to the Chief Clerk for comparison.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Motions and resolutions. There are copies of the non-controversial motions at the House Desk and online. If there is no objection, we will take action on those motions first. Hearing no objections, the motions prevail. Motions and resolutions, once again.
House Concurrent Resolution Number Two, a House Concurrent Resolution relating to Minnesota's peacetime emergency. The resolution is being referred to the Committee on Rules and Legislative Administration. Dowd moves that the rules be so far suspended that House Concurrent Resolution Number One be recalled from the Committee on Rules and Legislative Administration and be now considered and placed upon its adoption.
The member from Isanty, Representative Dowd.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. That is my motion. I'm asking that we bring up the Concurrent Resolution Number One that was filed this session. This is the resolution that would end the peacetime emergency. After all, that is why we were called into special session. It's the only reason we are here. While we do have the ability to conduct other business while we're here, this is the purpose we were called back. So, you know, we didn't bring this up yesterday because if we took a vote prior to the Senate, then their vote wouldn't have meant anything. And frankly, we wanted to see how the Senate was going to take action on this before we brought it up. So I'm encouraging members to vote for this suspension of the rules that will bring this bill from committee here to the floor, or excuse me, this resolution from committee here to the floor so that we can vote on it. I'll just quickly talk a little bit about some of the data and reasons why I think it's important that we act on this now and not wait. The last time that I spoke on this issue on the House floor, I talked a little bit about what's going on here in Minnesota and what's going on across the country. I do have very good news for Minnesotans. The coronavirus totals, COVID-19 totals, and rates and numbers, by all accounts, are seeing improvements here in the state of Minnesota, exponentially so since the last time we looked at these numbers. I'll remind you that our governor has employed some modeling, some professionals to do some modeling for him. He's used that information to make decisions on his reaction to this global pandemic. It's interesting that yesterday was the first day of our special session. Yesterday was also the day that our governor's model predicted would be the peak death rate here in the state of Minnesota. And yesterday, our governor predicted in his modeling that we would see 500 deaths per day here in the state of Minnesota. If you remember, he was originally predicting around 1,000 per day. That was version two of the model. In version three of the model, they downgraded that to 500 deaths per day. The fact that we actually waited a day to bring up this resolution The fact that we actually waited a day to bring up this resolution and debate it here on the House floor means that I actually have the actual death numbers reported in the state of Minnesota yesterday. I'm proud to report that we are under the 500 deaths per day that our governor has predicted and the number he has used to make all of the decisions that he has used to close down our economy, hurt Minnesota businesses, and lock Minnesota families at home. And not just mildly, we were quite a ways under the 500 deaths per day. Yesterday in the state of Minnesota, two deaths were reported, two. Not the 500 that our governor's model, his current model, is still predicting, but just two deaths. Now, two deaths is too many, and we don't want to see any deaths in the state of Minnesota. But the news here is tremendously good that our governor's numbers were so exponentially far off that we no longer sit under circumstances that any reasonable Minnesotan would call We talked about the governor's model, 500 deaths per day. The peak number that we got to in the state of Minnesota was on May 28th. We reported 35 deaths in one day. That was our peak. Yesterday, two deaths. The last time we voted on this motion, on June 12th, is that the date? I think it was June 12th. Twenty-five deaths. Thirty-five was our peak, 25 on June 12th. Yesterday, two, two deaths. You've heard a lot in the news about the ICU usage and making sure that we had sufficient ICU beds to treat our patients. Our peak ICU usage in the state of Minnesota was on 527. One day before the peak death rate, we had 260 people in ICU beds. Our capacity is about between 900 and 1,000, and we actually have a flex capacity because of the planning for COVID that would take us all the way up to, I think, 2,700 beds. So we had 10 times the access within 72 hours of what our peak was. On June 12th, the last time we voted on this motion, it was 191. Yesterday, it was 114, the number of people in ICU beds in the state of Minnesota, 114. That's the lowest since April 25th. And today, we're seven less, 107. You've heard much in the news about Florida and Texas and what's going on there. I want to put into perspective what we came through in the state of Minnesota and where these states are currently. Florida still has not reached one-half of our peak death rate. As bad as you have heard the news reporting as it is in Florida, I just checked it on my computer right now, you can look at home, Florida has still not reached one-half of our peak death rate. And Texas has not reached one-third of our peak death rate. And there is no indication that any of our numbers are moving up. They all appear to be moving down. Now, some of these states are seeing some increased cases. Some are trying to make a case that we're seeing increased cases here. It does not appear that way when you look at the data. And I'll remind folks that we're testing multiple times more people than we were testing a month and two and three months ago. Our testing capacity is up significantly. And I want to remind folks that still, after more than 120 days, our governor has us under a state of emergency so that he can respond to this pandemic. 120 days. What I have asked is that we, as a legislative body and as a legislative branch, take our authority and power and step up and manage this response with the governor. We end the emergency powers and that we codify things that need to be codified and respond to this together. The governor's orders were not based on good information. They're not based on, and in hindsight, I think that's very, very obvious now. This has gone on too long. The governor has not provided adequate information on the data that he has used to make his decisions. His modeling is incredibly flawed. And now we sit at the cusp, and I'm sure you're all hearing the rumors as well, that we're potentially facing more shutdowns or mask mandates, or a potential that our kids might not be back in school. And so now it's more important than ever, not just based on the data that says an emergency no longer exists, there's nothing, everything that needed to happen quickly that the governor needed emergency powers for has already happened. But it's more important now than ever that we step up and rise to the task that our constituents have elected us for and represent their voices here at the Capitol. The governor's current data of things that have actually happened does not call for a mask mandate. It does not call for locking down businesses again. Maybe we'll get to that in the fall. I'm not saying we won't. And I'm not saying that coronavirus and COVID-19 can't be a dangerous thing. They certainly can be. But the most dangerous thing are the scare tactics that have been used with bad information to scare Minnesotans. And in a best-case scenario, the governor's data was off by a magnitude of 10 times. But as of yesterday, his death data and his death rate was off by between 500 and 1,000 And we heard from Minnesotans in a poll recently, they want their kids back in school in the fall, and they know that that decision should not be up to our governor. It should be up to local school districts to decide if they can do that safely. And that's not a light decision for anyone, not for us, not for our governor, and not for those local school districts. But what's good for Minneapolis isn't good for St. Francis. And let's let those local school districts make that decision. That's why we have to step up and end these emergency powers now, so that we can actually be part of making these decisions. Or we can let the governor give us bad data, make bad decisions, and force a lot of harm on our economy. Minnesota parents want their kids back in school in the fall, and they trust that their local school districts will make the right decision and can keep their kids safe. I'm not saying broadly open them up. I'm saying let's not make a one-size-fits-all decision, because the governor's one-size-fits-all decisions have failed Minnesota thus far. And there's too much at stake to say we're not going to send our young learners back into the classroom where they will get the most out of their education. They should absolutely be in the classroom if the local school districts deem that they can do that safely. So let's make sure that we end the emergency powers today. The first thing we have to do is suspend the rules, bring this motion up, and then let's vote to end these emergency powers. Members, I don't take this lightly. You shouldn't take it lightly either. But we can't ignore the facts, we can't ignore the data, and we can't ignore the science. And that's why I've stood here, not to make political arguments, but to actually give you the data on what's actually happening in the state and how far off these predictions were. Two deaths yesterday in the state of Minnesota. Our governor predicted 500. Let's not let him use the 500-death scare tactics and bad information to make a bad decision about whether kids can be in school this fall. Let's leave that decision up to our school districts. Please vote in favor of the suspension of the rules.
Discussion to the motion. The member from Hennepin, Representative Edelson.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. We should all stop for a moment and think about, over the past four months, what a stronger federal response would have done for us. Instead, we have governors across the nation, from West Virginia to Michigan to California, trying to figure out how they're going to protect people in their states, residents, the vulnerable. And I hear the threat is over. I promise you, from data across the state, maybe we're seeing different things, but the emergency is not over. And I want school to resume too, Speaker Doubt, but the reality is, is we have to see what happens in the fall, and we have to see how that's going to work, and I think it will be different for different areas. But it's absolutely a false narrative, too, to say that removing the governor's emergency powers is all of a sudden magically going to fix our economy. I can tell you that consumer confidence isn't there. Look at states like Georgia. Georgia, who doesn't have any governor mandate saying that things have to close, the businesses are struggling. People are scared across this country. This is not a Minnesota issue. This is a national issue where every state is struggling right now. I ask members, as a pro-business Democrat that has worked with over 400 businesses, making sure that they stay open, asking people to wear masks so these businesses can stay open as the, I mean, we know the one thing about this pandemic is that what the science says that you inhale it, that's how you get it. But still, we dispute that it's an issue. So it's incredibly frustrating as we deal with this pandemic, that we look at different facts. It's so interesting that science is helping, people are losing different resources for their science, because the CDC and Oxford, if you look at all the well-known places for science, scientific research and evidence, it will tell you that this emergency is not over. And so I ask members to vote no.
Further discussion to the motion. The member from Hennepin, Representative Freiberg.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. This motion is hasty and ill-considered. Other states are dealing with huge outbreaks of COVID-19. We're doing okay in Minnesota managing the pandemic, but not everything is perfect here. COVID cases per day have been rising. We just saw that Minnesota is one of 19 states where quarantine is required before traveling to New York. Forty-nine states have emergency declarations in place. The president has issued major disaster declarations for all 50 states. It is not yet time to end this emergency. A peacetime emergency triggers various statutory authorities that can be used as needed during the emergency. A lot of things, particularly executive orders, depend on the emergency being in place. Of course, there's emergency orders like the eviction moratorium that would go away if we pass this motion. Protecting workers from retaliation is another one. Allowing corporate shareholders to hold remote meetings, that's another one. But these executive orders deal with many more topics than many people realize. Just let me give you some examples. Executive Order 20-46 authorizes out-of-state health care providers to render aid in Minnesota. It's a deregulatory executive order. If you vote to get rid of the emergency, you're imposing more regulations. Similarly, Executive Order 20-28 allows out-of-state mental health providers to render telehealth aid. This would not be allowed if we get rid of the peacetime emergency. Executive Order 20-36 reduces the salaries of the governor, his chief of staff, and his cabinet officials. If you vote to end the emergency, you will be raising the salaries of the governor and his cabinet. And it's not just the executive orders. Emergency authority enables the governor to quickly contract for personal protective equipment. Normally, he'd have to go through a two-month RFP process. At some point, things will be back to normal, and we won't need a peace emergency anymore. And I cannot wait for that day, but now is not the time. Vote no on this motion.
Members, we're going to revert to the quorum call. The clerk will take the roll.
Miller.
Miller, Prensburg, present.
Miller, Prensburg, present. Hartman.
President.
Speaker Hartman, St. Paul, present.
Further discussion to the motion. The member from Hennepin, Representative Howard.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Just a moment ago, Representative Doubt said we can't ignore the data, and so I just wanted to share some data with the members, some statistics. 926, that's how many cases of COVID were reported in Wisconsin on Monday, a record case for the third day in a row. That's the one state that does not have a peacetime emergency in the Union. 15,299 cases. That was the single-day record for any state in the Union that happened in Florida. Texas reported over 10,000 cases, and in that state, Governor Abbott admitted that he made a mistake, that they opened up too quickly, and as a result, they're one of many states that are rolling back their plans to open up. Thirty-three states are seeing more cases. And, you know, Representative Doubt mentioned the two deaths. And I want to remind folks of the number of, and this is maybe a two-days-old, but 1,500 deaths of Minnesotans in our state as a result of COVID and over 40,000 cases, many of which are folks that are dealing with significant, long-term effects from what is a very deadly, serious virus. Over 3 million cases and more than 132,000 deaths have been reported in the United States. Contrary to what Senator Gazelka said yesterday and what Representative Doubt said on the floor today, this is an emergency. This is real. And my goodness, are we fortunate that we have a governor, Governor Walz, that is willing to show leadership and make the tough decisions to protect the lives of Minnesotans. Without that, we would be like the states that I just mentioned. If we were, and I just want to give one more example of that. In mid-May, Arizona, they had imposed zero restrictions on capacities and bars and gyms and hair salons. Again, exactly what Minnesota would be doing if we would be following, and I'm putting up air quotes, the science from Representative Doubt, cases went up 500% in Arizona since mid-June. The reality is, nobody wants to be living with COVID, and it faces, and we face tough choices, and the governor is willing to make those choices. And Representative Freiberg laid out some of the executive orders that would go away this past. He mentioned the eviction moratorium. In other states that have rolled back their eviction moratorium, they've seen huge spikes in evictions in Wisconsin, in Ohio, in Tennessee, testing, contracting with PPE, flexibility for nursing homes with disability, or people with disabilities, mental health services. So given all of that, and given this motion brought forward by Representative Doubt, I would assume, I had assumed rather, that on the bill introductions for yesterday in the first-day session, I would see a litany of bills introduced by House Republicans that would show their interest in governing, in solving this, in concert with Governor Walz, as Representative Doubt suggested. But imagine my surprise seeing not a single bill introduced by a House Republican that would seriously tackle these issues that will go away if we take their advice and lift this moratorium. Members, the reality is, these are tough decisions that Governor Walz has to make. And the easiest thing in the world, easy thing in the world is from the chief seats to just lob bombs and say that, no, you ought to be doing it this way or that way. But it's tough to make real decisions, and, you know, it's your right as an opposition party to do so, but that's not what this moment calls for in the midst of such a deadly virus. And so this moment calls for leadership, and I'm thankful that Governor Walz is showing real leadership on behalf of Minnesotans. He's saving lives, he's protecting our state, and that's why I'll be voting no on this very ill-conceived motion. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
The member from Blue Earth, Representative Considine.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Members, one month ago, the minority leader stood on the floor and implored us to follow the lead of Texas and Florida. He said that they have not imposed any kind of restrictions on their reopening, and look how well they are doing. Even at that point, the day before he said this, Florida had set a new state record of 1,600 cases in one day. On the day that he said it, 1,900 cases. And as we all know, it has continued to grow until 15,000 in one day, more than a third of all the cases that Minnesota has seen. Texas now has had to backtrack and close their bars and restaurants. And goodness gracious, I do not want to see that happen to our bars and restaurants in Minnesota. They're opening up now, they're opening slowly, they're opening under restrictions, but they are opening. The main point of the minority's leader seems to be that Governor Walz has been so successful that we don't need to continue to have a peacetime emergency, and that we should be taking back the power and legislating. Yet, again, a month ago, when he was making these arguments, the Senate Majority Leader, Senator Gazelka, had already announced that within a week, we were going to go home. So they haven't really shown that they are willing to stick around and actually do the work that they say they want to do. So, and again, as Representative Howard just pointed out, not a single constructive thing in this particular session has been put forth. So I'm at a loss to think of why we would do that when they aren't willing to stick around. The governor has been enormously successful in keeping those numbers down. It just doesn't make sense. So I'm going to be voting no. We need to have somebody at the helm of the ship, and with the Senate going to go home, take their ball and go home, we won't have anybody here, and there are still going to be times when we need to make swift decisions. This is still considered the first wave. So it just throws me that the Senate Majority, or the, I'm sorry, the minority leader could stand there and say, we need to end the peacetime emergency, when across the country, numbers are going up exponentially, and here in Minnesota, as he pointed out, things are going pretty well, based on what the governor has already done. Thank you, Madam Secretary. Madam Speaker.
The member from Dakota, Representative Garofalo.
Would Representative Freiberg yield for a question?
Representative Freiberg, will you yield?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Yes, I will.
He will yield. Representative Garofalo.
Madam Speaker, Representative Freiberg, in your comments, you said that now is the wrong time for us to end the governor's special superpowers that he has over our state. Can you just tell us what criteria needs to be met in order for the DFL to say that the governor should no longer have the special power?
Representative Freiberg.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you for the question, Representative Garofalo. Well, I'm looking at a chart put out on Twitter by David Montgomery. Right now, I use that when I mention that cases are going up. They, you know, it appears like cases, this is a seven-day rolling average of COVID-19 cases. It looks like in mid-May, it went up to about 600 or 700 positive tests, dipped down to about 400 positive tests in mid-June, and now, mid-July, it's back up to about 600. I don't know exactly what circumstances under which it would be the best time to do that. I can say, though, when we've seen a 200-fold, you know, a 200, actually not 200-fold, 200-number increase in positive tests, though, now is not the time.
Representative Garofalo.
Would Representative Freiberg yield for another question?
Representative Freiberg, will you yield?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Yes, I will.
He will yield. Representative Garofalo.
Madam Speaker, Representative Freiberg, I hear you, so that when the test cases are going up, that's the wrong time to end the governor's superpowers. But when the cases were going down, you voted against repealing the governor's superpowers. So if the cases are going down, and that's a bad time, and if the cases are going up, and it's a bad time, is there a possibility that this governor is just never going to give up these special powers?
Representative Freiberg.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you for the question, Representative Garofalo. No, I believe he will. You know, I haven't spoken to him directly about when he plans to do that, but he's made very difficult, very politically challenging decisions. If I were in his shoes, I would be happy to give up the emergency powers as soon as I can. You know, I mentioned the cases, but that's really, there's a lot of different criteria that needs to be looked at here. There's cases, there's deaths, there's ICU capacity. So I know you're glomming onto the number of cases, maybe because that's the one I mentioned, so maybe that's my fault, but that's not, you know, that's not the only criterion by which he needs to make this decision. This is, and, you know, how it's going in other states has a direct impact on us. You know, we're one of 50 states here. So I think based on what's going on and things like deaths, you know, I heard the minority leader say, there were only two deaths yesterday, but, you know, I'm not a professional data analyst, but from what I know, deaths are a lagging indicator. So it's possible with these increases in cases that we may soon see an increase in deaths, even though he says that's the, although your leader, the leader of your party in your caucus says deaths should be the only criterion. I don't think it should only be cases, I don't think it should only be deaths, I don't think it should only be ICU capacity. There are a lot of different criteria that go into this, into this decision. These are literally life and death decisions. And, you know, so it's complicated. The modeling that the governor came out with was complicated. The modeling that the governor came out with was complicated, and it doesn't always work out the way you might expect. So, I would prefer to err on the side of caution when people's lives are at stake.
Representative Garofalo.
Madam Speaker, and thank you, Representative Freiberg. I appreciate the answer for the question. The concern that I and many Minnesotans are beginning to have is that perhaps this emergency authority is never going to be taken away from Jim Walz, and it's never going to be released by him. If you're looking at the standards that members are laying out for what needs to happen, it's unusually gray. There does seem to be this almost acceptance that we are okay with, that some people are okay with one person making these decisions through the end of 2022. Would my colleague, Representative Howard, yield for a question?
Representative Howard, will you yield?
Yes, I would yield.
He will yield. Representative Garofalo.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Representative Howard, in your comments, you alluded to the success of Governor Walz in this pandemic. Because of early on, the number of deaths in Minnesota, we actually have a higher per-capita death rate than every single state around us. Is that higher death rate as a result of the success of Governor Walz?
Representative Howard.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. First, just to take a stab at the question that you gave Representative Freiberg, one thing that would allow us to open up sooner is if folks on your side of the aisle would wear masks, and that we would take this virus as seriously as it's merited. That's how we can open up quickly, by taking this deadly public health crisis seriously as Governor Walz is doing. To answer your question, we're seeing just to our east Wisconsin, their cases, they're going through the roof. They've had record cases for four days in a row. And so, I, you're, in terms of how we're comparing to other states, I feel like we are taking this seriously, and I'm glad we have a governor who's doing so.
Representative Garofalo.
Madam Speaker, if Representative Howard could yield for another question?
Representative Howard, will you yield?
Yes.
He will yield. Representative Garofalo.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Representative Howard, so is Governor Walz's seriousness and Governor Walz's success the reason why Minnesota has a higher per-capita COVID death rate than all the states around us? Or are there other reasons for that?
Representative Howard.
Madam Speaker, I am wondering, if Representative Garofalo heard Representative Dowd's speech when he compared Minnesota to other states across our country, in which he talked about how Minnesota's situation is so much better than other states. And so, I guess I'm a little confused. On one hand, I'm hearing folks say, "Oh, this isn't a big deal, we need the peacetime emergency to go away." On the other hand, I'm hearing you say that, you know, things are much worse here, and thus, we need to open. So, you know, Minnesota, on the numbers, is responding well to an incredibly difficult emergency, and there's no perfect solutions. There's been 1,500 deaths of Minnesotans. That's why we need to take it seriously, and Governor Walz has shown the willingness to do so. He has not had an effective governing party, especially across the street, to do so, and that's why these powers should be conveyed to him for another month.
Representative Garofalo.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Would Representative Howard yield for another question?
Representative Howard, will you yield?
Yes, Madam Speaker.
He will yield. Representative Garofalo.
So, Representative Howard, we should make sure that we're operating off the same set of facts here. The per-capita death rate in all the states around Minnesota, are they lower or higher than Minnesota?
Representative Howard.
Madam Speaker, pulling out specific, obviously, there are different characteristics to the state of Minnesota in terms of density and otherwise to Iowa or North Dakota or other states, and those states also measure differently. Where we get in trouble is when, and this has happened throughout this pandemic, folks are choosing particular data points or sets to validate their pre-existing opinions, and then blocking that out there as if it's a black and white flashing light that validates a political opinion. And frankly, that gets us in trouble. We need to look at all of the data. The per-capita death rate in Minnesota, that's an important data point. So is the number of cases. So is testing. We need to look at the whole picture. And when you look at the whole picture, I have faith in the actions of Governor Walz, and I believe that we need his executive powers right now, in particular, because of the lack of seriousness we're seeing from folks across the aisle. There's a governing party across the street, the Senate Republicans, their leader just said yesterday that the emergency is over. That is absolutely startling to me when you look at what's going on across our country and our state, and validates more than ever the need to have Governor Walz's leadership getting us through this pandemic. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Representative Garofalo.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Representative Howard, perhaps the phone connection did not hear my question. If you would just yield for that question again. Do the states around Minnesota, all our neighboring states, do they have a higher or lower per-capita death rate than the state of Minnesota? I didn't, do you know the answer to that question?
Representative Howard, will you yield for a question?
I certainly will.
Representative Garofalo.
Thank you. And Representative Howard, do the states around Minnesota, do they have a lower or higher per-capita death rate than Minnesota?
Representative Howard.
Madam Speaker, I don't know if you were listening to my answer. What I mentioned is that other states have different characteristics, they also measure differently. And so, I, you were fixated on this data point because you think it helps prove a political point. And what I would say to you is that we need to look at the full picture. And when you look at the full picture, and you look at what's going on in our states around us, in particular, a state like Wisconsin, that doesn't have executive powers, that does have people in bars, we've seen, all seen the pictures, and may have had record cases for three days in a row, their curve is going the wrong way. And for us to want to compare and be like our neighbors on this one, I say that's a bad idea when you look at the numbers.
Representative Garofalo.
Would Representative Howard yield for another question?
Representative Howard, will you yield?
Absolutely.
He will yield. Representative Garofalo.
Thank you. And Representative Howard, I appreciate that you're jabbing me that I'm trying to make a political point. I'm not trying to make a political point. I'm trying to see if we agree on the same set of facts. And do you agree or disagree with the statement that the states around Minnesota have a lower per-capita death rate than Minnesota does?
Representative Howard.
Madam Speaker, Representative Garofalo, as I understand, they are pretty similar. For example, Minnesota is 27, Iowa's 24, per 100,000. You know, Michigan's a state that's at 100,000, which is far denser population. So, again, the, we need to look at the full set of data. We get into trouble when we pull out one piece of information and try to use that to justify sort of our preconceived political conventions. And again, I'll point to the data in Wisconsin, to our neighbor, where they have relaxed standards, and they have cases skyrocketing going the other way. Right now, what we need to do is take this global pandemic seriously, and to do that, we need to vote this piece down by Representative Dowd. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Representative Garofalo.
Thank you. Madam Speaker, if Representative Howard would yield again.
Representative Howard, will you yield?
Yes.
He will yield. Representative Garofalo.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and Representative Howard. Representative Howard, I just want you to answer my questions. I'm not trying to make a political point. Now, if you are of the opinion that the states around Minnesota have a higher per-capita death rate, then there's no sense to me making an argument about that if you have some different data set that we're not aware of. All I'm asking you is if the neighboring states around Minnesota, North, South Dakota, Iowa and Wisconsin, if they have a higher per-capita death rate or a lower per-capita death rate. You can, it doesn't assume any proposition or any sort of fact, I'm just asking, is that the case? Do those per-capita death rates states neighboring Minnesota have a higher or lower rate? And I'd like you to answer the question, because if you don't answer the question, you're probably going to get like 30 other members in my caucus who are going to get up and keep asking you the question. So, just answer the question based on your knowledge. Per-capita death rates adjacent to Minnesota, are they higher or lower?
Representative Howard.
Madam Speaker, I don't know how many times I can say it, Representative Garofalo, they have similar, as I understand, the data is very similar. I don't have the exact numbers in front of me. But I do know the characteristics of our states are different than Iowa, than Nebraska, than, you know, whatever our states around in the Midwest. And if, and as I mentioned, if you want an apples-to-apples comparison, if a denser population, look to a state like Michigan, that, and their rates. And so, looking, again, we have similar rates to our neighbors, as I've said, and the right response is to continue to take this seriously. Thank you, Madam Speaker, and Representative Garofalo.
Representative Garofalo.
Thank you. Would Representative Howard yield for another question?
Representative Howard, will you yield?
Yes.
He will yield. Representative Garofalo.
Thank you. Madam Speaker, and Representative Howard, you said that you thought that the rates were similar between our states. Now, the data I've looked at shows that the rates are dramatically different when you compare the Dakotas to Minnesota, Wisconsin to Minnesota. Iowa and Minnesota have similar rates in terms of Iowa's at 240, 240 deaths per million, Minnesota's at 274 per million. Is that the data you were referring to, or do you have another data set you're referring to?
Representative Howard.
Madam Speaker, the data that I've seen shows that it's pretty similar.
Representative Garofalo.
So, Madam Speaker, and Representative Howard, so what the facts show, what government data shows from, and there is universal reporting on how people die, is that North and South Dakota, as well as Wis, North and South Dakota have half the per-capita death rates of Minnesota. And Wisconsin has a substantially lower death rate than ours. They're at 142 per million, we're at 274. So, in light of that information, in your opinion, does that mean that we have similar death rates to those states?
Representative Howard, will you yield for a question?
Yes, Madam Speaker.
Representative Garofalo, is that your question?
I can restate it if Representative Howard didn't hear it, but I think he may have heard it.
Representative Howard.
Madam Speaker, I don't, I'm not quite sure why the fixation, Representative Garofalo, but, and I don't have each state up in front of me. Several of the states around us are very similar. As I've said, I think you get into trouble when you take out a single data point set. Minnesota, and the characteristics of Minnesota, North Dakota, South Dakota, they're all different, and the factors in terms of their measurement are different. So, I don't know what else you want from me to hear, Representative Garofalo.
Madam Speaker, if Representative Howard would yield for another question?
Representative Howard, will you yield?
Sure.
Representative Howard will yield. Representative Garofalo.
Thank you. Madam Speaker, Representative Howard, what I'm trying to get from you is an answer to my question. And my question is, I'll make it even more specific and simple for you. North Dakota has a per-capita death rate of 115 people per million. South Dakota has a per-capita death rate of 123 per million. Wisconsin has a per-capita death rate of 142 per million. Minnesota has a per-capita death rate of 274 per million. So, hearing those numbers, do you believe that those numbers are similar?
Representative Howard.
Representative Garofalo, I don't know how many ways I can say it. You're taking one specific data point rather than looking at the whole picture, you're fixating on death rates. You know, the reality is, we're have similar rates to some of our neighbors, maybe some of them are a little lower, Representative Garofalo. But the important piece of information here is that we're in the midst of a global pandemic. When you look at states, again, like Wisconsin, where they have record-high rates, when you look at what's happened in Florida, in Texas, areas that have loosened their standards or their peacetime emergencies, and they've had to go backwards on them, that's the last thing we need to be doing here in Minnesota. So, when you ask to compare other states, when you look at Wisconsin, a neighbor that we're compared to quite often, I would much rather be in the shoes of Minnesota, where we're taking this issue seriously, and we're seeing our curve go the right way and some the wrong way.
Representative Garofalo.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and Representative Howard. You said some of them may be a little lower. I guess that's the closest I'm going to get here to saying that the per-capita death rates are lower. But that wasn't really the crux of my question, Madam Speaker. The reason why I was asking Representative Howard this, if he would just yield for two more questions.
Representative Howard, will you yield?
Yes.
He will yield. Representative Garofalo.
Thank you. And Madam Speaker, Representative Howard, that, those questions were not meant to be gotcha questions or make a political point. It was to ask you, do you believe that the reason why the states around us have a lower per-capita death rate is partially because of their density? That it's not government policies that are driving these, but that density, population density, is an important factor in driving hospitalizations, ICU capacity and death? Do you believe, do you believe that density is a very important metric in those results?
Representative Howard.
Representative Garofalo, yes, I think density is a factor that we should be looking at.
Okay. And Madam Speaker, Representative Howard would yield to my last question.
Representative Garofalo.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Representative Howard, in light of the fact that you agree that density is a relevant portion, is a relevant factor in determining healthcare outcomes, why are you and Democrats insisting on a one-size-fits-all approach for our state? Why not regionalize the solutions we have? You've just acknowledged how important density is as a factor. Why would you not advocate for a policy that regionalizes these solutions?
Representative Howard, it sounds like Representative Garofalo, you're asking him to yield for a question?
Yes.
Will you yield, Representative Howard?
Yes.
And Representative Garofalo, is that your question?
Yes, ma'am.
Representative Howard.
Madam Speaker, Representative Garofalo, I do believe that the governor is looking at regional differences in terms of how we're applying services and getting health outcomes resources. It's partly why we, some of the executive orders have relaxed certain requirements, et cetera. But I would say, if this regional issue is so important to you, Representative Garofalo, why haven't you introduced a bill? Why hasn't anyone in your caucus, why haven't Republicans who have been so upset about the governor's executive powers done anything but just stand up and say, "Well, we don't agree"? I have not seen any leadership amongst folks that have an alternative plan. They're happy to have Governor Walz make all the tough decisions, and then take potshots at Governor Walz, but they're not willing to step up and come up with solutions of their own. And so, of course, we should be looking at regional differences in how this is impacting us, and I think that Governor Walz is doing so.
Representative Garofalo.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Representative Howard, I appreciate your patience. You should know that you've just made a big factual error. There actually is legislation that's been drawn up to offer an alternative method that protects Minnesotans while making sure that we're curbing the excesses of Governor Walz. Would Representative Dowd yield for a question?
Representative Dowd, will you yield? He will yield. Representative Garofalo.
Thank you. Madam Speaker, Representative Dowd, Representative Howard has said that House Republicans have just been throwing rocks at Governor Walz, that we haven't been engaging in any negotiations with him on an alternative set of strategies to make sure that we can keep Minnesotans safe without having this superpower for the governor that goes on in perpetuity. Is he right? Have you not been negotiating with the governor or offering any language in an alternative strategy? Is that correct?
Representative Dowd.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and Representative Garofalo, yes, and thank you for bringing that up. I have been negotiating. I have been negotiating a bill with the governor's office. I said during the last special session and in the press afterwards, I've been very vocal about the fact that I wanted to find a compromise solution that would allow the legislature to be involved in the process of kind of winding down this pandemic response. And so I have spent the interim with staff, nonpartisan and our staff. I have met with the majority party. I've talked with them numerous times about it. I have met now with the governor's office five times, I think. And we are making actually great progress. In fact, I'm optimistic that we can come up with a solution that will accomplish what everybody needs and allow us to respond to this, but also allow the state legislature to have a role. And so I'm optimistic we'll get that accomplished. I had a call with them again this morning. I think we'll probably have another one in the next, probably tomorrow. It seems like I'm having one just about every day. We're on our second version of the bill right now with about six more ideas that need to be incorporated into the next version, and we're doing some good work. So I do take offense to the fact that somebody would suggest that Republicans don't take this seriously, because I actually think that I have done more work to try to come up with a real solution to bring both sides together than probably anyone else in the legislature over the course of the interim since the last special session until now. And I'm proud of the work that I've done, and I think it's good work, it's real work, and it's a real solution. Now, I didn't drop it into the basket, so, you know, Representative Howard hasn't seen it yet, but it exists, and the governor's office has seen it numerous times, and we've had, I think, five conversations or meetings about it. So I do take offense to that, and I thank you for bringing it to Representative Howard's attention, that not only did I make that commitment during the last special session that I was going to take on that task and do that work, but that I actually followed through with it, and I'm doing what I said I was going to do, which is becoming more rare around here.
Representative Garofalo.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you, Representative Dowd. That's kind of what I thought the truth was. So, members, I would encourage members to vote in favor of spending the rules. We are now entering the 18th week of the governor having emergency powers. It is clear by any objective assessment that there are no standards defined for when these emergency powers are going to take place, when these emergency powers are going to end. We do not want to be in a situation where this governor keeps these powers through the end of 2022. That is unacceptable, and it needs to end. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
The member from Hennepin, Representative Noor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Members, I don't know any of you who have lost a loved one to COVID-19. I have. Not being able to see them, not being able to say goodbye, watching them through FaceTime, the pain that many Minnesotans have gone through and many are still going through. Members, I'm not a public health professional, but we all know the pandemic isn't going away, and we can't give up fighting it. We still have highly transmissible virus, and the vast majority of the population remains susceptible to it. The situation is even worse now since the virus is so much widespread than it was a few weeks or few months ago. This is about saving lives and livelihoods for Minnesotans. Public health intervention works well when the forces of politics and science are aligned. Epidemiologists have warned us, we need to listen to them. We need to be led by facts, not fear, by science, not assumptions. I also believe science should drive decision-making on safely reopening schools and not politics. We have seen clear examples, how transmission appears to be controllable with widespread testing, robust contact tracing, isolation, physical distancing, including wearing masks when many people are not following that simple process. If people could take those precautions seriously, perhaps the virus could have gone away by now. Members, we are in for a long haul, unfortunately. But that does not mean we should give up. If we're debating on the peacetime emergency orders by the governor, as many people have already talked about, let's have that debate. Let's have that conversation. Members, now is not the time to give up. And let's make sure that Minnesotans are protected. Thank you so much, Madam Speaker.
The member from Wabashaw, Representative Driskowski.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Members, there is no excuse for Governor Walz to continue the peacetime emergency except simply to maintain the total power that he seems to enjoy so much. I ask everyone to simply look at the facts. When this pandemic first materialized, the governor declared a peacetime emergency declaration that was in March. Governor Walz originally stated that he declared the peacetime emergency because swift action was needed in order to respond to the pandemic, and it would only be for two weeks. Nevertheless, the governor has now extended his peacetime emergency order into its fifth Clearly, the governor misled us. He didn't declare an emergency just to take immediate action. He declared an emergency to give himself months of unquestionable, unbridled power. Most egregious, Governor Walz has used a peacetime emergency declaration to usurp the role of this legislature. Complete powers of a branch of government to which he has no claim, the legislative branch. Such actions are nothing short of tyrannical. Still, when the peacetime emergency was declared in March, Governor Walz and his administration began discussing statistical models related to COVID-19 deaths in the state of Minnesota. In April, the governor's administration pushed one model, which he claimed that the state could see 22,000 deaths in six months, even with a stay-at-home order in place. The month before, he had said it was 74,000 deaths and 55,000 if a stay-at-home order was in place. Then in May, the governor's model said there would be 29,000 deaths in 12 months. As of today, July 14, there have been 1,542 deaths related to COVID-19. Not 74,000, not 55,000, not 29,000, and not 22,000. Members, Madam Speaker, make no mistake, every one of these deaths represents a tragic loss for families, friends, and the entire state of Minnesota. However, we need to deal with this pandemic in a serious and measured way. The Walz administration has done none of that. The Walz administration spent $6.9 million to purchase a building in St. Paul and convert it into a morgue for the use during the pandemic. The governor told us this state-run morgue would be necessary to combat the surge in Minnesota COVID-19 deaths. What surge? Members, there never was a surge. Like the rest of the lack of science that the governor used to push us into these powers that he now hangs on to. COVID-19 deaths have dropped from 696 deaths in May to 402 deaths in June. On May 28, Minnesota experienced 35 COVID-19 deaths in one day. Yesterday, there were two. COVID-19 death rates are dropping in Minnesota even as Governor Walz's unconstitutional stay-at-home order has ended yet once again. And he claimed to be holding the mantle of science, 74,000 deaths, based on a mysterious fake model that we have never seen the inside of. In early April, in early April, he said, "We can say with 95% confidence that we are going to need a minimum of 3,000 beds," he meant ICU beds, "starting in the middle of May." 95% confidence he was out of the fake model that he was peddling to us. Members, in the middle of May, the ICU bed capacity was between 200 and 250 beds, not 3,000, that is 95% confidence from his fake model delivered to us. And I sit and listen here, and I listen to some of the Democrat representatives, and thank you, Representative Garofalo, for reiterating some of the same points that I did twice on this same floor over the last three months. And the relative position of those states around us in dealing with COVID-19 continues to be extremely better than we are doing here in the state of Minnesota, with the full lockdown that the governor brought and the remnants of the lockdown that he still won't let go of. So while that failing approach made us perform worse, the other states around us are doing much better. I don't understand it. The governor's approach is failing, and we have Democrat representatives here in the Minnesota House of Representatives who don't want to retain and bring back their power to write laws in this area. They're willing to relegate it to a guy who's failing. Now, members, we all have election certificates. Democrats, I wonder what you're doing with yours? Are you ashamed of it? You don't want to do the things you told the people in your districts you would do when you got elected to come to this place. You would come to represent them, to form the laws of this state going forward. The governor is doing that today on your behalf, and you're just fine letting him continue. Do your constituents know what you're doing? The Democrats have always accused Republicans of practicing the politics of fear, but Governor Walz's unnecessary purchasing of a morgue wins the prize for fear peddling in Minnesota politics. Despite Governor Walz's mildly, wildly misguided response to this pandemic, he is now considering forcing every Minnesotan to wear masks. This step would certainly be yet another unconstitutional power grab. However, Governor Walz's own record shows that he has no problem with such an infringement on the rights of Minnesotans. He's been doing it for the last four months. The governor has no mandate to continue his peacetime emergency order. Every excuse he has offered for its renewal has fallen flat, every one of them, and the fake models included. As such, I believe it is proper that the Minnesota legislature strip him of his emergency powers and resume its proper constitutional place at the front of the line of forming the laws of the state of Minnesota, a role that us legislators have, not Governor Walz. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
The member from Scott, Representative Albright.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I too have been sitting here, and it's amazing the amount of information that one can glean when, you know, you just take a pause and start thinking about things. But, you know, I start thinking about what this whole pandemic started on, you know, and obviously, we clearly mourn the number of people that have lost their lives. But I know that we're doing justice in mourning the other losses that we have suffered. When you start thinking about the jobs that have been lost, you think about the delayed medical care, you think about the isolation, you think about missed school, and I'm going to talk about that in a little bit, you think about the prohibition of worshiping with your fellow believers, and I think about the loss that that represents to each other and to our communities. I hear a lot of talk about a new normal. I don't think we need a new normal. The old normal was just fine. And I think, as we've heard, this emergency has passed. We are in the management phase of making sure that those that are most vulnerable are protected. And when you talk about the most vulnerable, you talk about folks with such, you know, underlying comorbidities, if you will, diabetes, hypertension, obesity, and lung disorders. And you think about what this emergency power has done, is that it's treated as everyone the same. Doesn't matter how old you are, what your physical condition is, treated everybody the same. How tragic is that? Outside of New York, it's been a nursing home issue. When you think that roughly 80% of the deaths in Minnesota have occurred in congregate care settings, where you can't visit anyone, where they are confined to their room, where they don't have the opportunity of sharing their story with anyone, which is a mental help for them, and I wonder if we're fighting this on the wrong terms. And the governor just came out with a statement in a recent study. He said that 90% mask compliance could save 1,700 lives in Minnesota by November. Where'd he get those numbers? And what study is he referring to? And how many deaths would occur without masks? Leader Dowd has been talking about the decline in deaths, in the decline in ICU usage. How does that statement even make sense for him to use in promoting his case for continuation of the emergency powers? You talk about masks. I see a number around the floor here. Drywall dust has a particulate size of 10 microns. COVID-19 virus is .1 microns. And I wonder if the uses of masks isn't so much an issue of safety as it is a cultural sign of solidarity. The daily death count has been marked, or made into a daily new case count. But with more testing, is it any wonder that we're getting more cases? But the death rates and the ICU rates are declining. Recently, the CDC said and warned that COVID-19 is at the stage where it is very possible that it will not be classified as an epidemic. that it will not be classified as an epidemic due to declining deaths. Still, they're saying more masks are required, and our leadership are considering a mask mandate. How does that make any sense? You know, we're on the verge of the fall, and in the fall, we send our kids back to school typically, right? I can remember growing up, and when I sent my own kids off to school, we'd talk about first days, and we'd talk about the pictures, about going school shopping, about the new backpack, the 64-box crayons. That was from old school. That's when I was growing up. And I'd also think about the sights and sounds. You'd walk into that school, and the shores would have been polished over the summer, and the janitorial staff had cleaned things up. You were excited. You were excited about the opportunity to start a new year with the advent of having new classes, maybe some new classmates, getting to know what they did over the summer with vacations, sporting some new clothes. How many of us in the room can remember laying out our clothes for the first day of school? You were so excited about going to school the next day. But what are we facing now? Fear and uncertainty. Parents are wondering, what is going to happen? Do I have to talk with my employer about how to adjust the schedule so that I can take care of the kids when they come home from school, how to get them off to school, what about daycare, what about after-school programs? And yet, this governor is saying, well, hold on, we'll make a decision soon, but it'll be maybe one of three models, but you better be prepared. For what? You know, I think we're doing a disservice if we allow that to happen because, first and foremost, those decisions should be made by the local communities. Those decisions should be by the leadership of the schools. Those decisions should be made by the parents, not by unilaterally following someone who thinks he knows best for every school district across the state. I hear a lot about data. Follow the science, because by golly, that's what's going to keep us safe. University of Stockholm just released a study in June. Chances of surviving COVID-19, worst case for the age bracket of 0 to 9, 99.9603%. 10 to 19, 99.9603. 20 to 29, 99.9037. And there's been a lot of talk lately about all the 20-year-olds that are catching this. Well, goodness knows, what's happening is they're figuring out that they're going to take their chances on getting it because they know they're not going to die. The reality is, is that maybe if they get sick, they're going to recover. God bless them, because the reality is, is that what they've done is they've taken back the liberty and the freedom, the individual rights, that this governor has taken away If you want to take a look at who's at most risk, there are the people with comorbidities, who are aging, who are isolated, and yet, we're the ones that can't take a vote and take back the control that we were elected to administer. It's a tragedy. I can't believe that some in this chamber would accept on face value that just because we were fearful of this disease some time ago, that we need to maintain that in the same order and the same function. People in my district wonder if we've lost our minds. What are you thinking? Are you deciding for me that I can't send my kids to school, that I can't open up my business? Oh, by the way, 50%, thanks so much. When was the last time that you looked at a P and L and ran a business on half of what you expected to pay the rent for? In what economic world does this governor exist? The models are flawed, and the repercussions will last, for some, a lifetime. Do you really want to live with that? Do you want that to be your legacy? We were brought into this chamber to make decisions that followed the Constitution of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And this governor is taking that away from our state and the people who call it home. Come to your senses. Take back the responsibility that is ours by our election certificate, by the people that sent us here.
The member from Hennepin, Representative Hurtas.
Thank you, Madam. Thank you, Madam Speaker, and this has been a very full and robust debate about a lot of information, a lot of facts, a lot of figures. And I'd like to remind the body that in an emergency, there are usually three phases of managing that emergency. It is the response, the management, and the recovery. Now, in response to COVID-19, the governor declared, based on information he thought was most available and developed with models that have proven to have very flawed assumptions, and that's what models are, everything's based on assumptions, but it was necessary, and I think most Minnesotans, including most Republicans, believed we all had to roll up our sleeves and do what was necessary to combat this threat. So the issue was, we didn't have enough capacity in our hospitals, ventilators, intensive care units, to handle the huge volume that was predicted by these flawed models. Now that said, the fact that we all were on board with doing what was necessary, we soon discovered that we had, as Minnesotans, a great ability to respond to that threat. And we quickly moved in a situation in which we were able to establish additional ICU capacity and make way for all of the necessary tools and the PPEs that were necessary with the response phase of this pandemic. So what have we done? We've now entered into the next phases of management, and now we're clinging on to these emergency powers and have migrated or gone through a metamorphosis, if you will, of preparedness to now prevention. And you might call that a management tool as part of the emergency response, but nonetheless, we have the ability to deal with the data that has been shared by many members. Now, if there's any question in your mind about the work that's being done and not throwing rocks at the governor, I can attest to all of the membership that the work that Representative Dowd, Leader Dowd, has been doing has been outstanding with regard to trying to negotiate with the governor and standing up for the legislature's responsibility as a co-equal branch of government. Representative Dowd shared with me some of the beginning draft provisions of that bill, and I'm aware of what some of them are. Now, in my younger life, many of you have heard and understood, I used to be an ICU nurse, a coronary care nurse. And a few weeks ago, I was partying to a presentation by Department of Health, and we were going over some of the graphs and the data, and I was a little perplexed by some of the graphs. And the departure in some of the graphs was that while the incidence of discovered cases and positive cases was going up, the ICU demand and the hospitalization demand and the death rates were remaining relatively flat. And so I wrote M D H, I asked, you know, what is the explanation for this? My own experience in ICU or CCU is usually death is preceded by intensive care or coronary care, needing a ventilator. And the response I got was, well, Representative Hurtas, those were good observations, but actually, in Minnesota, 62%, 62% of all the COVID deaths happened outside of the hospital setting. There was never any demand for ICU, never any demand for a ventilator. And the reason stated was they were end-of-life decisions, meaning that so many of these deaths died with COVID-19, but they had comorbidities which were really the underlying cause of death, which we've heard some other controversy about how COVID-19 deaths are being recorded. So in the beginning of COVID-19, we had little or no testing capacity. And we've heard in previous debates that you can torture the data until it shall confess. And we see much of that going on. When we're making comparisons about, and Leader Dowd mentioned about the media's covering the rise of infection and the rise of positive test cases in some of these other more populous states, that's true. But in the beginning of COVID, a few states had testing capacity, and many of them have ramped it up to well over 20, 30, even 40,000 tests a day. So of course, as you are testing a greater number of the population, you're going to find greater positive test results. But let's put it in perspective if we want to torture the data until it shall confess. In Minnesota, we have 5.6 million people. In Florida, there's 21.48 million people. So that's four times the amount of population. And if they're just catching up or starting to see the surge, that may be the case, but you have to extrapolate that on a per capita basis. Texas has 29 million people, nearly five times the population. So Representative Albright mentioned many of the things that are going on right now. And I got to tell you, just today, my wife and I, we visited a small business in Delano, Minnesota, and the small business owner there said, please, please, stop Governor Walz, he's killing us slowly. These types of businesses, as mentioned, were never set up to run on 25% of revenue with social distancing or 50% of revenue. It's the last 50% is where you actually get into the black and actually generate a profit. Many businesses have decided it makes more sense to just stay closed because we're just going to lose more money if we open on a partial basis. I'd like to mention about the collateral consequences of the policies we're taking. So we're losing businesses, we're losing jobs, there's going to be less jobs for people to go back to work. There's an increase in suicides. It's been documented, unusually high by the social isolation. Issues with domestic abuse. I have a constituent in Wayzata who wrote me two weeks ago, absolutely furious, furious because the services of normal medical treatment were suspended during COVID-19. He had a biopsy scheduled, and it was postponed. And when he was finally able to go in and get that biopsy, he has stage IV cancer in his head. And he's really, really pissed off that the governor is the cause of his death from his perspective. He feels that the governor has written his death warrant, and it's tragic, absolutely tragic. So the business before the body right now is to suspend the rules on voting whether or not to end the peacetime emergency powers. Members, I'd like to remind you that the governor derives his power from Chapter 1231. And in Chapter 1231, he's obligated to call us back every 30 days if he wants to extend his powers, which is the primary reason that we've been called back in today. But if you do not approve the resolution to go ahead and suspend the rules and take up a vote, you're really denying the very process and the spirit and the intent of Chapter 1231 to decide whether or not this governor should continue his powers. Now, yes, I know it's a procedural thing, and it really won't matter in the end because you're in the majority, but to argue that you shouldn't suspend the rules is really preempting the provisions of 1231, I believe. So I think that the majority is obligated to vote to suspend the rules. We need to take it up. We're going to take a roll call vote on should we end the peacetime emergency powers. We've had a good and spirited debate about the role of the legislature and whether or not we want to really totally acquiesce and turn the powers over of co-equal branches of government to the executive branch. I don't care if it was Governor Palenti or whether it was Governor Dayton or Governor Walz, it doesn't matter who's there, it doesn't matter what party it is. We should be more concerned about aggregating the authority that we have as a legislative body, as a co-equal branch. So, members, I rise to ask you to support waiving the rules. You have the votes, you don't want to agree with us at this time, that's fine. And I will close with, I hope that Representative Dowd and the rest of leadership can come to the table during this week and actually resolve some of the provisions that remain outstanding with the work and the effort that has been put in to ending the peacetime emergency under 1231 and granting, according to what Representative Dowd and others have been working on, granting the governor certain powers to deal with the remainder of the effects of this emergency, which would include the management and recovery. So with that, Madam Speaker, I thank you for the time, and I yield the floor.
The member from Ramsey, Representative Pinto.
Representative Albright said, thank you, Madam Speaker. Members, Representative Albright said, quote, "This emergency has passed." And I hope that that's one sentence that we can all agree could not be true. We can debate things that come after that. But we are up at 3.4 million infections across the country. We're adding 60,000 new infections a day. We're up to 135,000 deaths. Americans are not even allowed to travel into Europe, we're not allowed in. And you think about the path that we've taken, think back to February or even into early March, there was talk about, you know, some very small number across the country, this is just going to go away. We're just a few months into this. There is no way in which this emergency is passed. So at least if we can agree that there is in fact a peacetime emergency happening right now, I would defy anyone from saying that. And so I want to make sure that we're clear as well, there's been discussion about infection rates and death rates and pointing out that, in fact, the states that are around us have higher per capita infection rates than we do. Iowa has 50% more than we do, more than 1,100 cases per thousand, or 766 in Minnesota. And these are not in the densest places. I will point out the counties in Minnesota that have the highest per capita infection rate, Nobles County, the highest rate in our state. Want... Nobles County, the highest rate in our state, Wantan One, second highest, then Mauer, Todd, then Stearns, a little more dense, Lyon, Candy Ojai, Rice, Cottonwood. Tiny but farther down the list, Freeborn, Murray, and Pipestone. Members, this is hitting us everywhere in our state, impacting us everywhere in our state. And people are urging us to open, like other states have done in the past. As Representative Considine pointed out, if we'd followed this advice a month ago, we'd be in the spot that Texas and Florida are in. These are states that are closing up and then imposing big economic costs on their states. Look, members, the economic losses that we're experiencing, Governor Walz is not the cause of that. This illnesses, this diseases, look, being in a pandemic is lousy. There are no happy paths to take, there's no good paths. This is difficult decisions, and we're going to be suffering with this for a while because that is how this works. The steps that we've taken have kept our numbers down, and it astounds me every time when I hear folks point to numbers that were presented if we hadn't taken these steps, then we took these steps, and they say, oh, look, now there's not this problem. Well, yeah, of course not, because we took these steps. And still, we know, we look across the country, that this is hitting us hard, hitting our families hard and really harming us. And the best way for us to get past this is to wear masks. And it just shocked me to hear the comment that mask compliance might be some kind of cultural sign of solidarity rather than a way to keep your fellow Minnesotans healthy. Folks, you are a couple of weeks behind the times on that. President Trump has been seen wearing a mask, he wears a mask in public now, Vice President Pence. They know the best way to protect our fellow Minnesotans and the best way to keep businesses open is to wear a mask. That's what's happening with our businesses. And our businesses know that if folks walk in with a mask and if they take steps, then consumers, customers, are going to feel comfortable coming in and doing business there. If that's not how that works, and we continue to have outbreaks and greater outbreaks, folks don't wear masks, we open things up, trust me, that is going to be extremely, extremely bad for business for a very long time. So wear a mask, stay the course, take this very seriously, and vote this down. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
The member from Chicago, Shisago. My deepest apologies. The member from Shisago, Representative New.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. As I'm listening to the debate, I think in some ways, we get a little lost in the weeds and we lose sight of what this debate is really about. This debate today is not about COVID. It's not about how serious COVID is. I think we all understand that it's serious and even one death is tragic. There's no question about that. What this debate, though, is about is does the current situation with COVID warrant a peacetime emergency? Four months ago, when the governor instituted the peacetime emergency, I think there was pretty broad agreement that we didn't know enough about this virus. We didn't know how it would behave, how many people would get infected, what the death rate really would be. We didn't know anything, there were so many unknowns. And there was enough information coming out of other countries and sort of hotspots around the United States that it was scary. It was scary. We didn't understand, we didn't know, it was scary. And I think that most of us, probably on both sides of the aisle, four months ago, would have said, yeah, we got to get a handle on this. We need to figure out what's going on. And there are some significant measures we need to take to make sure that we are protecting Minnesotans. I think it's important to remember that with the executive orders that have come forward, we were told that with those things in place, we would still see tens of thousands of deaths. So people now like to say, well, because we did those things, we brought that death rate down and we have very low deaths. Well, we were told that the death rate was going to be high even with those things. And frankly, I will give some grace to the idea that we were working with the data we had at the time, and there wasn't a ton of information available yet. At this point, we know that these things have proven to not be true. They've just not proven to be true. And I want to read directly from the CDC website. This is directly from the CDC today. This is right now, I just looked this up a few minutes ago. And it's talking about mortality rate. It says, based on death certificate data, the percentage of deaths attributed to pneumonia, influenza, or COVID-19. So I want to be clear that this is not deaths attributed to COVID. This is deaths attributed to COVID, pneumonia, or influenza. All three of those things combined. This is not just COVID, all three of those things combined. It said it decreased from six point nine percent during Week twenty-six to five point five percent during Week twenty-seven, representing the eleventh week of a declining percentage of deaths due to not just COVID, but all three of those things combined. All three of those things combined. And here's the real critical piece, the percentage is currently below the epidemic threshold. Members, this COVID, pneumonia, and influenza combined are currently not an epidemic. Certainly, COVID alone is not an epidemic. Now, does that mean we shouldn't take it seriously? Of course not, of course we should take it seriously. People are sick, we don't want that. But again, the vote we're taking today is about a peacetime emergency. And does what is happening right now, does that warrant a peacetime emergency? The answer is clearly no. The answer is clearly no, when it's not just COVID, but all three of those things combined are currently below the epidemic threshold. We don't know what the number is just for COVID, they don't even talk about that because they can't even get up to the threshold with all three of them combined. Some of the discourse today has been a little bit disappointing, and we hear a lot about playing politics with this and that it's become a partisan issue. I don't think this is a partisan issue. We've been working really hard with our colleagues on both sides of the aisle to make sure that we are dealing with COVID-19 appropriately and with the governor's peacetime emergency appropriately. We've heard that Republicans are doing nothing to deal with it. Well, that's simply not true and frankly offensive. We are all working hard, we're all doing our jobs. And frankly, we've already passed some legislation to deal with ending the emergency powers. This is particularly concerning for our counties when it comes to some waiver extensions. They need an off-ramp. They can't just turn off what some of the peacetime emergencies that have done. They need just a little bit of time to roll back some of those executive orders. Perfectly reasonable. And Republicans and Democrats, House and Senate, we've all agreed that that's perfectly reasonable. And we've passed those things into law to make sure that we have time to deal with that. But the things we're dealing with now are not an emergency. The data that's coming out, we can see trends. We can see what's happening ahead of what actually happens. We can deal with this legislatively. We do no longer, we no longer need one person in the state of Minnesota making these broad, sweeping decisions for the entire state. It's not an emergency. And you know, I would challenge my friends on the other side of the aisle right now. The vote we're actually taking right now is to suspend the rules. It's not even to vote on the peacetime emergency, it's to suspend the rules. We've heard quite a few members from the other side of the aisle speak, and they've spoken passionately that these emergency powers should continue. And I would challenge you that if that's the case, then take the vote. Vote now, vote yes to suspend the rules so that we can take that vote. Is this still a peacetime emergency? Does it warrant what is currently in place? Or can we finally realize that as we know more, as we've learned more, as the CDC itself is reporting, this isn't even an epidemic right now? It's not an emergency, we can deal with this legislatively. And frankly, we can take responsibility as legislators for leading in the state of Minnesota. And you know what, sometimes that means that we will have to make hard decisions. Sometimes that means that we may get some data that tells us, you know what? We've got to do something that frankly, I don't want to do, but the data shows that we need to do it. But we signed up for that. When I ran for office, I signed up for that. I signed up to make hard decisions. I did not sign up to shy away from that. That's what we have been elected to do. And members, it's time we accept that responsibility and do it. I encourage you to vote yes on suspending the rules.
The member from Dakota, Representative Mann.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'm a little confused. I don't really understand the purpose of part of this conversation today or what we're trying to do. So one person gets up and says, we're doing great, we don't need to do anything more about this global pandemic that has claimed the lives of over fifteen hundred Minnesotans. Another person gets up and says that our per capita deaths, which when taken as a single data point, certainly does not tell even a remotely sizable part of the story. But I wouldn't expect people to know that because the people saying these things are not epidemiologists. But they're saying that that number is super high in Minnesota. So that means we're doing a terrible job. And then another person gets up, calls the entire thing a lie. Another person gets up and says that this virus has treated everyone the same, and I would bet that communities of color and those who live in poverty would beg to differ. But again, I wouldn't expect you to know that because no one here, we don't have epidemiologists talking on the subject, right? Another person gets up and talks about how population numbers make a difference, which is a direct counter indication to what another representative said. So none of the things that are being said are based on factual things. And are we really talking about masks? I mean, this is just absurd. So the next time anyone has surgery, I want you to ask your surgeon and the entire operating room staff not to wear their mask. If you feel that masks are just for show, I'm sure you will not mind your surgeon sneezing directly into your incision. Now, studies support the use of masks, we all know that, so I'm not even going to keep talking about that. But the models that people are talking about, that people are calling fake, right, are not fake. And I love that we have reached a federal level of discussion here and are calling science fake on the Minnesota House of Representatives floor. But regardless, those were models that were based on no safety precautions. And we have greatly changed those models because Minnesotans care about each other, and we have put safety precautions in place. So again, is the governor's approach failing or not? I'm confused. We had two deaths yesterday, Florida had a hundred and twenty deaths the other day. Do we compare those numbers? And the thing is, it's not just about the death numbers, right? What happens two years from now? Does the virus reactivate like shingles? Does it cause a painful outbreak like herpes? Does it lie dormant and rise up again when your immune system is down and kill you then? We don't know. So to say that we will be fine, let's all get this virus and move on, we are going to be fine. How dare you? It seems like the goal of the other side of the aisle today is to call the governor a liar, to call epidemiologists who have been working day and night to save the lives of the people of this state liars. How dare you? How dare you pretend that you know better than the scientists who are working every day to save your life? And you are right, Representative Albright, the repercussions for some will last a lifetime. A lifetime of shortness of breath, a lifetime of chronic fatigue and chronic pain and other potential sequelae from a virus that we can protect one another from. The emergency has not passed, not at all. So I urge you, members, to stop listening to people with no scientific knowledge and vote no on this. Because many people in this body have made it very clear today that they don't believe in science. And again, we are still in a peacetime emergency. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
The member from Carver, Representative Nash.
Speaker, thank you. Thank you, Madam Speaker, thank you, members. I'm going to take a little bit of a different approach, and it's been highlighted by a couple of folks. But I want to talk about, again, what is it that we're about to cast a vote on? And the thing that we're about to cast a vote on, if I could maybe frame it in a different manner, is whether you feel that you are able to be actively participating in the solution relative to COVID-19 in our state. Have you the temerity, do you have the fortitude, do you have the ability to maybe come back into special session quickly to come and make decisions? And I want to remind you that we've done things like this before. And I would ask, Madam Speaker, if Representative Baker would yield to a question.
Representative Baker, will you yield?
Yes, I will, go ahead.
He will yield, Representative Nash.
Well, thank you, Madam Speaker. And Representative Baker, I want to take us back to when you and I were freshmen, and we had a crisis on our hands, and you were really at the tip of the spear of that. Can you remind us what that crisis was in the state of Minnesota, Representative Baker?
Representative Baker.
Representative Nash, I believe that was a crisis of opioids and out of control medical problems with over-prescribing opioids, if I recall.
Representative Nash.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, Representative Baker, I maybe should have given you a little more leading. I believe we had an epidemic in a certain type of livestock.
Oh.
Are you asking him to yield yet again?
I will, yes, Madam Speaker.
Representative Baker, will you yield?
I will yield, Madam Speaker.
Representative Nash.
And I will answer the question that was asked. Okay.
Yes, Madam Speaker, Representative Baker, we had a massive problem in our turkey farming community, correct?
Representative Nash, Madam Speaker, we sure did. We had a horrible crisis at that time with the poultry industry, correct?
Yeah, and thank you.
Representative Nash.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And I just wanted to ask that, I probably should have sent you a text first, Representative Baker, but members, we were in session then. We had members working day and night on that, and I want to commend the many legislators that worked on that issue. And I commend Governor Dayton for the ease with which he worked with the legislature. And I just wanted to frame the conversation that we're having right now around the work that we did then. That what we're saying today by not even voting to suspend the rules is that you feel incapable, perhaps, of taking on the responsibility, as other people have talked about, of making the most out of your election certificate and being a part of all the solutions. And I will grant you, I will give you, and I even cast a vote for the granting of executive emergency powers to the governor based on what he told us. We're going to have this need to ramp up, we're going to need to get P P E, we're going to need to get some hospital beds, we're going to need to do various things. I was on board. I supported that. But what we're at today is a decision as to whether the legislature should be put back into the position of being a co-equal branch. Because right now, let me tell you, we're not. And I heard Representative Newer say that it's okay to have that debate. Well, great, if it's okay to have that debate, and it's okay to have the debate relative to the suspension of the governor's executive powers, then put up the votes to move forward. Right now, we're not voting on whether or not we're going to end his executive powers. We're not talking about that, we're talking- We're talking about whether we're going to suspend the rules and then move forward to have a debate. And let me frame the debate. The debate resolution, putting on my old debater hat, the debate resolution should be resolved. Do, does the Minnesota legislature wish to acquiesce its responsibility to the executive branch solely in the face of a global pandemic? We don't have to do that. You can come back into special session. We've now done it twice. Around my house, we're calling this the extra special session because the first one was so special. Now we're on the extra special. You have the ability today. You have the ability to vote yes to suspend the rules. And then we can have more debates. And we can, you know, talk about the definition of the words per capita. We can get to the bottom of that for Representative Garofalo. And we can talk about a lot of different things. But the debate should be framed around this singular issue of, do you wish for the executive branch, for Governor Walz, to be the only person making the hard decisions? There's 201 of us that have been elected to be the people's voice in the legislature. We are a co-equal branch of government. And I am here to tell you, when I talk to people in my district and I hear from people around the state, they don't even think that we're in the same ballgame right now. And they're right. You have the ability to vote yes to suspend the rules. And I was of perhaps the misguided understanding that we were actually going to be given an up or down vote on this today. We're not getting an up or down vote, apparently. We're going to not get even past whether we suspend the rules to have an up or down vote. That's surprising and horribly disappointing. But if we were, if you were to steel your spines and say, "Let's have that debate. Push green to suspend the rules." And then push green, vote yes over the phone, to say, "Yeah, you know what? I think it's time for the legislature to get back in the game." We've done it before. For those of you that were here for the turkey flu that we were dealing with, with the problems with the poultry industry, a lot of folks worked round the clock. We would come in and we would recess. We would go to rules. We'd bring bills forward. We would do all manner of different things. It can be done here. But what can't be done unless you stand up and say, "I'm a legislator. I was elected to make decisions. I was elected to make laws." We can't do that if you don't stand up and do this. We just can't. So as you're sitting at home, or maybe you're on a work break if you're working, or you're there on the floor, think about this. You have the capacity. You have the ability. You have the wherewithal and the smarts to be here, or the people that elected us wouldn't have sent us. You've got the ability to say to the governor of your own party, "It is time for the legislature to be the legislature again." And I will say, because I say this every time we talk about this, we did not go looking for COVID. COVID found us. But we have the ability to be a part of those that make the decisions and come up with solutions unless you decide to vote no on suspending the rules. And I will tell you that Minnesota is watching, folks. I get a lot of emails. I get emails from a lot of people in your districts. They're watching you. They want to know that you at least have the guts to stand up and put yourself back in the role that you were elected to do. Vote yes to suspend the rules. And then vote yes to repeal the governor's powers. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
The member from Hennepin, Representative Robbins.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. I appreciate the debate tonight. And I just wanted to go back and clarify to an earlier point about a member who mentioned that our side of the aisle had not been advocating for a regional approach to this COVID pandemic and how we're managing it. I have been working very hard to advocate to the governor and anyone who will listen that we need a regional approach since March. And I've sent the governor letters. I have emailed with his various commissioners. And I have spoken on this floor repeatedly about the caseload in various counties and why that demands a regional approach. One-size-fits-all does not help our state. It is hurting our counties, hurting our small towns, hurting individual cities within even the metro, including my district. So I am here to once again argue for a regional approach. And in previous discussions of this, I have always focused on the cases. How many positive cases are in different counties? And there's great variation. So as I continue to push this argument in that spirit, I sent a letter with support of many of my colleagues yesterday to the governor saying that he should have a regional approach and allow school districts to make their own decisions about whether to reopen this fall. And in that letter, based on data from yesterday, it said that there were 53 of the 87 counties that had less than 100 positive cases. 53 of our 87 counties have less than 100 positive cases. Of the 34 counties that have over 100 cases, 14 have over 500 positive cases. Eight, only eight have over 1,000 positive cases. One-size-fits-all will not work. It didn't work for small businesses. It hasn't worked for graduations. It hasn't worked now for, as we consider what to do about reopening schools. But I have not before spoken about the actual number of deaths in counties throughout the state. And so while I've been sitting here listening to the debate, I looked up the numbers on MDH. And I want to share with you the number of deaths throughout the state and why this also demands a regional approach. As of today, Minnesota had 41 of our 87 counties with zero deaths. We had 33 of our counties with between 1 and 10 deaths. So a total of 74 of our 87 counties have less, 10 or less deaths. Of the rest of them, 83 of our 87 counties have less than 50. We have three counties that have the bulk of the deaths. But yet we are taking these one-size-fits-all mandates that are hurting our communities. They're hurting our families. They're hurting our economy. They are hurting our students. They are hurting the achievement gap. Members, we do need a regional approach. The state data shows it. And it has shown it consistently since this started last March. We have been having this conversation over and over. So I take exception to my colleague who said that we have not been arguing for a regional approach. I don't know how to argue about it anymore. But I'm just making the plea again to my colleagues that, and to the governor if you're listening, that a regional approach is essential when 74 of our 87 counties don't even have a single death. Thank you.
The member from Wright, Representative Lucero.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Power corrupts, and absolute power corrupts absolutely. And that is exactly what we are seeing today. Governor Walz has experienced what absolute power tastes like. And he will not relinquish his power. This is the true emergency that Governor Walz continues to defy the constitutional principle of separation of powers. He has negated the role of the legislative branch because he believes he is smarter than everybody else, not only in this legislature but in Minnesota, that his approach is the best. And what he says goes. And that is incredibly dangerous, Madam Speaker. We heard the model say that yesterday, July 13th, 500 people would die at the peak day. That was the revised model. I did the math. That is 0.4% accurate. So the governor was 99.6% wrong. But if you go off the original model or the earlier version, 1,000 people were supposed to be passing away on July 13th. So that'd be 0.2%, putting the governor 99.8% wrong. Do the facts matter to the Democrats, Madam Speaker? No. I heard multiple Democrats on this House floor over the last two hours explain how they were confused. Let me clear it up. Republicans are trying to get us to return to the Constitution, Madam Speaker. There's no confusion. We need to return to the Constitution. Democrats want to maintain one person with unilateral authority. I heard another member on this floor say that Wisconsin is very different or has differences than Minnesota. You know where they're the same, Madam Speaker? All of the Minnesota residents on a daily basis driving across the river to go to Wisconsin because they are open for business. I've heard numerous accounts of the multiple license plates, Minnesota license plates lining the parking lots of Wisconsin. They're not that different. Wisconsin is not that different. I heard some say, "Wear your masks." Madam Speaker, you know what I say to "wear your masks"? Democrats, keep your laws off my body. Loneliness is killing Minnesotans. I saw an article about a month ago, maybe not even, a couple of weeks ago. Loneliness is responsible for the deaths that are occurring because of Governor Walz's unilateral decisions. It is time to return to the Constitution, Madam Speaker. Democrats need to recognize reality that there is no longer a need for one person to be making decisions for the entire state of Minnesota. And that increased positive testing does not equal increased numbers of deaths. And that is what the majority continues to forget. We have increased the capabilities of detection. And therefore naturally, we're going to have an increased number of cases that are tested positive because of the increased capabilities. The time is now to vote green to the return to the Constitution. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
The member from Hennepin, Representative Morrison.
Members, thank you, Madam Speaker. Members, we're living through unprecedented times and are traversing uncharted waters together as we endure this global pandemic. The United States is unfortunately in the unenviable position of leading the world with the most cases and the most deaths from COVID-19. Almost 3.5 million Americans have tested positive for the virus. And almost 140,000 people have lost their lives over the past four months alone from COVID-19. The lack of a coordinated federal response has hurt our country badly from a public health and an economic standpoint. And of course, in the loss of human life. We're fortunate here in Minnesota to have benefited from excellent leadership from Governor Walz, grounded in the best available science, informed by public health experts, and guided by input from our excellent healthcare and business communities, which have a strong tradition of public-private partnerships. Clearing a peacetime emergency in mid-March enabled the governor to mobilize a state response to the pandemic. With an early stay-at-home order that slowed the spread and bought time for our health systems to catch up and better prepare, followed by a carefully calibrated reopening, we have fared better than other states. The peacetime emergency provided tools to help save lives and to mitigate the impacts of the pandemic. It allowed the state to forge the public-private partnership between the state's healthcare delivery systems, the Mayo Clinic and the University of Minnesota, that helped launch a statewide testing strategy to test all symptomatic people, isolate confirmed cases, and expand public health surveillance tools. This strategy helped create a testing rate. Testing and contact tracing have been steadily increasing. And we've completed more than 700,000 tests and have reached the governor's moonshot goal, 20,000 tests per day capacity. Increased testing and tracing helped to improve control of the pandemic and has supported a safe reopening society. We're seeing a surge in cases in states that opened prematurely and are now having to dial back, close businesses, and reimpose stay-at-home orders. We must stay vigilant and we must maintain flexibility so that we can respond to new information as it comes in. In addition to states like Arizona, Texas, and Florida that opened up too early, the experience in Sweden has provided a cautionary tale. Sweden essentially eschewed stay-at-home orders and bargained that it was making a trade-off between economic prosperity and some lives. The result's been tragic, with 40 times as much loss per million than in the United States with no economic advantage. As we continue to make our way forward through this national and industry challenge, I urge everyone to remember that the virus is our enemy. We're facing a public health crisis and we must approach it as a united front. The virus does not respect national borders. And it certainly doesn't respect state borders or county borders. It will infect whomever it is able to infect. And the infection has spread from person to person through respiratory droplets and possibly when it is aerosolized. It's frustrating for all of us. All wanting to go back to life as usual with school, sport, travel, and the human contact in daily lives that we were all accustomed to. I thought Andy Slavitt, the former acting administrator of the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid, put it well in his testimony to the House Pandemic Response and Rebuilding Committee last week when he reminded us that we are watching science unfold. It isn't always clean and it isn't always linear. There are stops and starts. Science tends to be painfully slow and labious at times. But we've learned a lot over the past four months about this novel of useless knowledge that we gain along the way to assess the changes we're facing. We must follow scientific and public health expertise and make policy and public health recommendations based on the best available information so that we can both optimize public health and our economic well-being. One of the easiest ways we can do that is to wear masks and to maintain social distancing in indoor public spaces to decrease the transmission of the virus. We must also be cognizant of the fact that the virus has laid bare the inequities that exist in our society and is disproportionately hurting and killing people of color, medically vulnerable, and people living with disabilities. Staying at home and self-isolating is a privilege that not everyone has. Many of the frontline and essential workers cannot stay at home or maintain social distancing. Members, our interconnectedness has never been more apparent. We have to be in this together because we are in this together. As a physician, I want to reiterate that everyone should wear a mask when they are in indoor public spaces to protect those around you because it will help prevent the spread of the virus, which will help us keep our economy running, will help us continue to open up our businesses and our schools and our society, and because it will save lives. Forty-nine out of 50 states in the United States currently have a version of a peacetime emergency in place. Minnesota is rising to this challenge. And we can all be proud of the progress we've made. But there's more work to do. This is a marathon, not a sprint. There are no easy fixes. We must maintain vigilance and flexibility in our ability to respond to the pandemic. And that means supporting the governor's ability to help keep Minnesotans safe by continuing the peacetime emergency. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
The member from Stearns, Representative Teis.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I really feel like it is time we're maintaining. There's a lot of different sciences out there. And we could probably find something to tell us all what we want to do. I did do a lot of research on how I wanted to handle this pandemic. I did do a lot of research on how I wanted to handle this pandemic. I don't get freaked out by this stuff. I decide that I'm not in charge and that doesn't mean I'm not going to protect myself and my family because that's not true. I will. I wear a mask when it is required. But I don't believe that is the only thing that's going to save us because I do believe that self-isolating too much is not good for us as well. We can look at some of the issues that are happening within our own districts. And I'm having, my mailbox is full every day with people saying, "You need to stop this. We need to get back to some sort of normal, whatever that means for us." People are so burnt out. They are so down. I am so scared of what our mental health is going to look like when we come out of this. I don't believe that scaring the Jesus out of everybody is a way to do this. But I also feel that we don't know that we're not over the worst of it because we don't know what this is going to do. We just don't. But I think we can all decide and we're very smart about how we're going to take care of this. I mean, for goodness sakes, we're Minnesotans. We're holed up every winter. What is the thing we talk about the most? When can we go back outside? And that's where we're at with this, how we're dealing with this. But the biggest thing is, I'm feeling like my constituents are not being heard. We hear a lot about, you know, what's happening and where all the deaths are and all that. You know, we're just not seeing it here in St. Cloud like we are in the metro area. And I get that. But my folks do not feel like their voice is being heard, especially when the governor is running the show. If I want to do a good job of representing my constituents, then I'm going to ask you to allow us to have this resolution go forward because my folks want that. We're hurting Minnesotans. They're reaching a breaking point. They're fatigued. My son was tested on Thursday because somebody at his work had it and thankfully, he's negative. But it's really interesting talking to him. He's 35 and he's like, "Oh, you know, if I get it, I get it. I'll just deal with it, just like I do with everything else that comes in life." I can't sit home alone all day because I'm just not that person. I love being out with folks. And I find out that a lot of people feel the way I do as well. But I think my son is right. I can't sit home and hold myself in because, "Oh, it might happen. It may happen. It could happen." I can't live my life like that and I choose not to. But I will tell you what breaks my heart. And it's what we're doing to the folks in long-term care, in assisted living and anyplace else. My aunt passed away just over a week ago and the funeral is on Saturday. She was my mom's sister. And my mom has a brother as well who's living in assisted living. He flip-flopped back and forth from first of all, going to see my aunt in the nursing home and then going to the funeral. Because if he went, and he's 89, he's healthy as can be. But if he went to either go visit his sister before she died or go to the funeral, he would have to be two weeks in his apartment, his small studio apartment, for two weeks to contaminate, to self-contaminate. And you know what? Doing that was harder for him than going to his sister's funeral. He chose not to go because he did not want to sit in his apartment for two weeks. How is that fair? Why are we not doing a better job of screening and testing our folks in these facilities so that they can have some kind of a life? What is this doing to his mental health? Are we killing our folks because we're isolating them so much that they don't even go out and, I mean, they can't even go out to his sister's funeral because that terrifies him more spending that two weeks inside his apartment? That is ridiculous, folks. It's just ridiculous. COVID is killing a lot more people than the numbers suggest because we're making them isolate. We're making them do things they ordinarily wouldn't do. People are made to interact with people. Children are supposed to play with children. My son tells me all the time, "We got to get these kids back in school." It was harder for my grandson to do online learning because every time he would do it with his teacher, he was so upset because he wanted to be in school with her. They're just, they're at their wits' ends. We're looking for ways to interact again as people should do. We have a lot of things that come into our lives. But look at the death numbers. Yes, there's a lot of, there's a lot of cases, but look at the death numbers. I can't justify having things go the way they have been going with our governor and his peacetime powers because my constituents are not being heard. My constituents are not happy with the way things are going. They don't feel like they're being treated fairly. I'm going to ask you to vote yes. Let's hear this resolution. I think it's time. I don't think we're in an emergency. I think we're in a maintenance. We've got the hospitals set up the way we wanted them set up. But guess what? Our hospitals are having financial troubles too because they can't do their regular work. So what are we going to do when all of a sudden they're in financial crisis? It is time. It is time we move forward and not stick in a corner hovering scared because what could happen? We need to listen to our constituents. My constituents are tired. They're fatigued. They're ready to move forward. They're willing to take that chance. They will do what it takes to make sure that they can open up their businesses to see people. It's time, folks. Please vote yes.
The member from Hennepin, Representative Long.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I wanted to draw members' attention to a report that the state received today from the White House. And it is titled, "Minnesota State Report." And it is the advice from the White House about what we ought to be doing in the state of Minnesota to deal with the COVID-19 crisis. First, it notes that we are in the yellow zone in our state. So we are not meeting the criteria to be in the clear yet. We are still in the range that the White House has indicated we have concerns as a state. But I think the recommendations are telling. First, they say, "Ensure that all business retailers and personal services require masks and can safely social distance. Ensure compliance with current Minnesota Stay Safe Plan occupancy restrictions." This is the very Stay Safe Plan that would be removed if we ended the governor's emergency declaration. And here, the White House is saying that we need to actually go the other direction, that we need to implement and enforce the current Stay Safe Plan that we have in order to keep the state safe. The Stay Safe Plan is the linchpin of our public health response. The White House supports it and the minority party in the House is trying to stop it. They go on to say, "Consider further limitations on occupancy or closure of certain businesses, bars, restaurants, dependent on changes in local reported cases this week." So they are saying, "We may need to actually go further than the current restrictions that are in place in Minnesota in the Stay Safe Plan." This is the type of restriction that the governor needs flexibility to implement. This is exactly the reason why the legislature gave the governor the ability to declare emergencies, to be flexible and to deal with situations on the ground and to respond to situations in instances like a global pandemic that we are dealing with right now. So the White House is literally saying that we should be enforcing the Stay Safe Plan. But the effort today is to strike a end the Stay Safe Plan. Members, we've lost the brother of our lieutenant governor, the father of a member of Congress, the mother of our attorney general, someone who said that COVID-19 only affects those in nursing homes, only impacts the elderly. My three-year-old son was admitted to Children's Hospital just about a month ago and he was diagnosed with Kawasaki disease. It's a treatable disease. It's an inflammation of the blood vessels. And he received excellent care. But it was one of the scariest experiences of my life. He received three rounds of treatment over the course of two weeks. He received a blood transfusion. He received steroids. I sat by his bed many nights over those two weeks, holding his hand, telling him, "It's going to be okay." Normally, they diagnose three cases per month. But when my son was admitted, he was the third diagnosis that day. This disease is so new, the virus. They don't know for sure if COVID is triggering the increase in Kawasaki disease. But these increases are happening across the country and across the world. And that's what the evidence points to. So this disease is having devastating impacts, not just in terms of death, but in terms of extremely scary diseases that are happening to our kids. We have 49 out of 50 states that are still under emergency powers because of the seriousness of this pandemic and the need to respond. The White House agrees the governor's Stay Safe Plan is the right approach and we should not end this plan and in fact, says that we need to strengthen it. The governor is using his executive power wisely. We should allow him to continue it, as 49 out of 50 states are doing, to keep our state safe. Thank you, Madam Chair.
The member from Carver, Representative Bowe.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Members, I would just like to take a moment to ask a common sense question. And that is, are we still in a peacetime emergency? So Minnesota Statute 12.31 defines a peacetime statute as, "A peacetime declaration of emergency may be declared only when an act of nature, a technological failure or malfunction, a terrorist incident, an industrial accident, a hazardous materials accident or a civil disobedience endangers life and property. And local government resources are inadequate to handle the situation." And I think that's the key. You know, number one, the original intent was to buy time by flattening the curve so that we could have adequate PPE, we could have adequate space in the hospital, things like that. And it would seem as though we have reached that goal. But I just don't think the numbers justify the ongoing perversion of our checks and balances, which are really created by the three branches of government that we have. And our current situation really has the executive branch running roughshod over the other branches of government. Our government does not work that way. My grandmother used to tell me the story about the boy who cried wolf. And it seems the young man was working the field out on the edge of town. And perhaps he was bored, perhaps he was scared, but he cried wolf. And the villagers all came running. Well, there wasn't a wolf. So the villagers went home. A little while later, the boy cried wolf again. And a few less villagers came to look. No wolf. Several times that happened. Pretty soon, the villagers did not show up anymore when he cried wolf. And when there was an actual wolf there, no villager showed up to help and the sheep were attacked by the wolf. Ladies and gentlemen, it seems like we are crying wolf by continuing the peacetime emergency past its time, past its useful time. There's a danger in doing that. If we should find ourselves in a situation with a more severe pandemic, with a higher level of mortality, higher levels of infection, what's going to happen if people don't take that direction, those urgings seriously? As a scientist who has some classwork in meteorology, I can tell you the National Weather Service always hesitates to issue a tornado warning until they're pretty certain that a tornado is there because they don't want to begin to cry wolf and people start to take those warnings less seriously. There is a profound danger in declaring a situation to be an emergency when it may or may not be an emergency anymore. So I would encourage us to not continue to cry wolf by continuing the peacetime emergency. We should still be sensible. We should still be careful. But I think the peacetime emergency has passed and it's time to return control of the government to the three branches of government as was intended. So members, I would encourage a yes vote to suspend the rules and allow a vote to occur today. Thank you.
The member from Olmsted, Representative Liebling.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. It has been really interesting to sit and listen to this debate. And I want to start my comments, first of all, by expressing my, not exactly condolences, but my feelings and my sorrow at what happened to Representative Long's child. And we could all hear the emotion in his voice and we can all, I'm sure, imagine what that experience must have been like for him and his family. It really makes me think, members, about what this whole pandemic and this whole situation has meant, not only in his family, but to all of us. Because in some of your voices, I hear anxiety. In some of them, I hear sorrow. In some of them, I hear anger. And I think that we need to acknowledge that we are living in the time of a pandemic. Life has changed. The pandemic is affecting just about everything in our lives. Some of you want to blame this on the governor and others have said, and I agree, this is the pandemic. Now, we can debate different decisions that Governor Walz made. Other members have said, "This is a disease that is new." The knowledge about it has been evolving and Governor Walz has been in the very uncomfortable situation of having to make judgment calls based on the best available evidence. And he has done that and I think he's done a pretty good job. Not a perfect job. I'm sure he would acknowledge that as well. But he's done the best that I think a person in his situation could have done. So I just first want to say, which other members have said, this is not the situation we're in with our economy, with the restrictions that some members have talked about with a lot of emotion, like Representative Teis talking about what's happening with seniors and people being isolated. Yes, we are all grieving. Yes, there are impacts on mental health. Yes, people have lost jobs. All of these are terrible, terrible impacts. None of us should fail to acknowledge those impacts. But the question before us is not, can we blame somebody about this? We have to realize that our common enemy here is the virus. Our common enemy here is the pandemic. And as a body, as a state, we need to be asking, what is our best path forward? So that is how I wanted, just to start my remarks here. What I really wanted to do is kind of go back and respond to some of the things that I heard from some of the members. Something that I've heard many of you say, many of the Republican members have said, "We can't have the debate. Let us have the debate." Well, I've been sitting here, I think, since 5 o'clock and if we're not having the debate, I don't know what we're all doing here. This is the debate. So when you say, "We can't have the debate," that just makes absolutely no sense to me. Another thing that I've heard from members is, "Let us be a legislature. Let us have our power." Well, think about that for a second, members. Normally, we leave St. Paul in May and we don't come back till January. And some of us are not with the new group then. And some of us are not with the new group then. We've retired, or we've been defeated in our elections. So this idea that somehow, if the governor didn't have emergency powers, the legislature would be sitting there making all these decisions? That's just not the reality. That is not how this works. So this idea that we somehow have no power as a legislature? I'll tell you, I've been busier than I've ever been. Now, I know that's not true for all of you. But, you know, I've heard many of you say that you're working very hard. And I, you know, that is, we are working hard. We are still fulfilling our duties as a legislature, even though we're not doing it under normal circumstances. I want to respond to something that Representative New said. She spends a lot of time talking about the CDC saying that they're going to take away the epidemic designation. And I have to tell you, I actually have a master's degree in epidemiology from many, many years ago. I've probably said that before. Not that I'm an epidemiologist by any stretch. But when I heard that, I thought, that just doesn't sound right. Well, I did a little searching around. And no, that is not in fact correct. If the CDC said that, I would indeed like to know where that information can be found. What the CDC has said is that the epidemic is defined by an increase in cases. It's not about the numbers of deaths. And the CDC has not made any such statement about taking away the designation of what's going on as an epidemic. So, you know, there's a lot of misinformation out there. We have to be careful. Some of this information is being put out there, perhaps intentionally. And it's really important that we not bring misinformation to the House floor and repeat it. I do want to also, I know several members have talked about deaths and, you know, the numbers of deaths. And of course, numbers of deaths are very, very important. But I want to emphasize again what so many members on our side have also said. Deaths are not the only issue. Deaths are not the only issue. We heard this from Representative Dr. Mann, who really made this point, I think, very, very well. This is a novel disease. We know. In fact, we heard the Select Committee of the Minnesota House had a hearing recently. And I was watching just online, I wasn't on the committee that day, but I saw a physician talking about how things have changed with regard to this virus, and how this virus is so unique that physicians are not able even to tell patients what the prognosis is. They don't know. They're still learning. Every patient seems to respond differently in this pandemic, to this virus. We just heard Representative Long talking about the possible impact on his child, where other people say, oh, no, children aren't affected by this disease. We hear about 20-year-olds saying, oh, we'll just get the disease, and then we'll be fine. Well, I've just recently seen some data suggesting that this may not confer lifetime immunity. The immunity from having the virus may actually be somewhat short. And as Dr. Mann said, we don't know what the long-term impacts are. So let's stop talking about this, as though deaths are the only issue. I also want to go back to what Representative Lucero said. Representative Lucero, I don't know if you really were angry, but you sure sounded angry. And you were talking about absolute power corrupts absolutely, and the executive not wanting to relinquish power and thinking he's smarter than anyone else. And I wondered, I've never heard, I've never heard Governor Walz call himself a stable genius. I've never heard him say that he was smarter than everybody. I've never heard him talk about pardoning or commuting sentences of his cronies, certainly not so they wouldn't testify against him. This really sounds like a different chief executive. I'm not going to mention who that might be, but some of you might have the idea. But I don't think we're anywhere near that territory. I don't think that's a fair characterization of Governor Walz at all. I think maybe it's a little bit of a projection, in fact. And finally, I just wanted to end with this. There was some talk early on about, in fact, Representative Dowd was asked to yield. And he talked about he's been working with the governor, and he's had all these meetings with the governor. And that's great. I'm glad to hear that. Because frankly, I don't want this to go on forever either. And I know the governor doesn't want it to go on forever. But here's the thing. We do need to figure out how to continue with the tools that are needed to manage the pandemic. So I'm glad that Representative Dowd is working with the governor. But it made me wonder, if Representative Dowd is working with the governor, and they're negotiating, why in the world would the Republican members, and especially Representative Dowd, why would you just want to come in today and flip the switch off? Knowing, knowing that there are powers that are being used that are needed to manage the pandemic. That just seems really irresponsible to me. I'm glad to have these negotiations going on. I'd love to see the bill, I'd love to work on the bill with you. Because I think that's really important work that we need to do. And I've, you know, have the privilege of being engaged in doing a little bit of that with the bill that we passed in last special session to continue some of the waivers and be able to wind things down and so on. And we should be doing that work. But I don't know why you'd want to switch the switch to just go off today. Because that's what the tool is that you're trying to exercise. You're just trying to shut off those powers. Just say, oh, Chapter 12, done. And that, that would be the worst thing you could do for Minnesotans. So members, let's just vote no on suspending the rules. And let's get to work and actually help to keep Minnesotans safe and actually do our job. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
The member from Douglas, Representative Franzen.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And members, so I'm listening to this entire debate on whether or not we're going to suspend the rules to remove those emergency powers from the government, or from the governor. It reminds me of why Democrats are the party of big government. So they believe that they personally, the government, is everybody's mom and dad. That government knows what's exactly best for each and every person, but it's a one-size-fits-all module. Republicans believe that people, individual people, can make the best decisions for themselves and their family. It's the difference between the individual versus the collective. Democrats are all about the collective. And they don't like anybody being different. They want to treat everybody the same. I'm going to share a little story. A couple of weeks ago, I was with some friends, and happened to be on the golf course, actually. And I had heard rumors, or a story of somebody's loved one. It was their, it was their sister that was in the hospital that was transferred to another hospital, and she was dying. And the family was devastated because nobody was allowed to see her. And she was dying alone. And later that evening, the sister of the sister dying was sharing what was happening within the family. And that the husband and other family members, grandkids and such, were down in the cities. And they were so sad because they were in a hotel room while their loved one was alone in a hospital room. So I made some phone calls. I didn't know, I couldn't promise anything, but I made some phone calls, and magic happened. And the husband was allowed to go spend time, 10 minutes, with his wife. Grandkids were allowed to come in for 10 minutes. And she was dying on death's door. Members? All it took was for those 10 minutes for her blood pressure to change and her outlook on life to be changed. She is now in Alexandria in a nursing home, recovering. All it took was 10 minutes to be with her loved ones, to hear her loved ones' voices, to say to herself, "I need to fight to live." How many people across the state of Minnesota are dying alone because there is nobody there to cheer them on, to wish them back to health? Because they're dying alone in a hospital where their loved ones are not able to talk to them or to touch their arm for simply 10 minutes? I think that's shameful. While I'm happy, so happy for my constituent's sister to be pulling through and alive and being able to spend more time, more life with her family, there are countless others across the state of Minnesota that do not have access to a lawmaker or even know that they can contact their lawmaker to see if that lawmaker can do something so that they can say goodbye or hopefully wish their loved one back to health. Depression is real all across the state of Minnesota, too, with this. Kids are being affected, adults being affected. The mental health is going to be far worse than the COVID-19. And there was some discussion on mask-wearing. Well, I just heard from a constituent that the governor plans on mandating it tomorrow. He's pretty well in the know. If that's the case, all right. Well, I mean, I guess the governor knows what's best for us, right? He gets to force a decision for us. But just let you know, everyone, that coercion is not consent. So you can coerce people, like if you want to buy or sell, you got to wear a mask. Doesn't mean we consent. And if you're going to assume, or if you're going to mandate mask-wearing, then let's make sure people are using it correctly. I can walk around all over my community and see incorrect people, people wearing their masks incorrectly. So you see it under the nose, you see it underneath the chin. They're talking to somebody, you can't hear them. So what do they do? They fling their mask off and talk to the person, fly in their germs all over the place. So make sure people are wearing it correctly. And who's going to mandate that? I mean, yeah, you can have a mask on your face, I guess, but if you're not using it correctly, what's the point? And are people going to be laundering it? You got to launder the homemade masks every day. And if you're moving from point A to point B, I would assume you would need to put on a new mask. If you're going to the grocery store, you've got one mask on. If you're going to the Target, you need another mask on. Otherwise, you're just moving your germs right along with you. We need to start also having that conversation about taking care of our health with boosting our immune system, with vitamin D, zinc, C, eating real food, not processed, exercising. That's not, you know, the mask isn't going to save our lives. But putting your own health, our own health, into our own hands, that's what's going to do the difference here. And as lawmakers, we should be setting that example for our districts. And if you ask me right now, I would say COVID-19 isn't exactly the epidemic. The real public health crisis right now is the crime that's taking place in the Twin Cities. We've got children being raped in the homeless camp. Raped. Last week, we had a mom who was murdered, leaving a baby that was taken out of her womb in NICU. Nobody's talking about that. But let's mandate those masks, people. Let's mandate the masks. Maybe we'll feel better about it if we're mandating masks as saving lives instead of addressing the real issue taking place in our state, which is the murder scenes in the Twin Cities. And back to the executive powers. Governor Walz has had those powers for one-third of the year. One-third. And it's apparent, listening to the debates taking place on the floor, that the Democrats are okay with advocating their legislative responsibility to one man who didn't even run to be a lawmaker. He is our governor. We are the lawmakers in this body. We are the ones that should be making these decisions, these very tough decisions. And yet, maybe it's because those decisions are tough that Democrats are rather just say, well, it's the governor's decision, and they just want to wash their hands of it. But that's not the job that we were elected to do. We were elected to make those tough decisions. If the governor, if you find the governor having executive powers for one-third of the year with the prospect of him never, ever giving them up, then perhaps you need to resign. This isn't a job for you. And if you're running for office or reelection, maybe just give up, resign, because clearly, you are not up to the task that you are running for. Minnesotans can make decisions for themselves. They do not need big government doing it for them. Members, I ask that you vote to suspend the rules. Thank you.
The member from Goodhue, Representative Haley.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Speaker. I appreciate all the personal stories and the stories of the impacts that this virus has had on all of us and the people that we represent in our districts. But the debate right now really isn't about COVID. It isn't about masks and statistics. The debate is fundamentally about our Constitution and what our Constitution outlines regarding the distribution of powers between the executive branch and the legislative branch. And after three hours of discussion on this tonight, what we really need is something to break through this impasse. We have been under emergency orders for five months. I introduced a bill tonight, it's calendared, it's House File 81. And I would encourage you to look at it. It provides a possible solution for us to move forward. House File 81 provides an alternative that if the governor extends his emergency powers, past the 30 days, that the legislature would have two options. One, to terminate the peacetime emergency declaration in its entirety. Or two, to terminate any subsequent order or rule promulgated by the governor directing a specific response to the peacetime emergency. Now, members, we have already done that in some cases. We have put into statute some of the things that we felt were necessary in managing the COVID-19 response. Many of those things were related to PPE equipment or providing certain flexibility to DHS. So we've already done that. I believe we have the capability and the intelligence and the wherewithal to look at each of these executive orders individually and decide what is necessary to keep in the governor's hands to manage a pandemic and which things the legislature needs to take independent action on, as many people have said tonight. What we were voted in office to do, to look at the facts and consider the impacts to our constituents and to our state and make difficult decisions. But that is our role. So I would encourage you to look at House File 81 as an option. We certainly aren't going to get there tonight. I know you're not going to suspend the rules to take it up. But we need But we need to reach an, we need to reach a compromise to move forward. The majority party hasn't outlined any criteria that would move us past this impasse. We know COVID-19 is not going away anytime soon. We will be dealing with this as a state and as a nation for some time. I agree with my colleagues who have commented that we are in a management phase of this crisis. The governor has not outlined criteria as to when this will end, what needs to happen, what statistic needs to move, what chart needs to change that gets us out of this mode of having only one person in charge of our entire government, the sole hands in one person's authority. So we need to consider other options, folks. And that's the proposal I have on the table, calendar tonight, House File 81. I know tonight is just a vote that you probably won't give us, but we need to consider how we move forward, and I encourage the discussion around that issue. Thank you, members, and thank you, Madam Speaker.
The member from Sibley, Representative Groenhagen.
Do you hear me? Well, thank you, Madam Speaker and members. Obviously, it's been a spirited debate at some length. I would like to share perspective on that. I would like to talk about the death sums. All deaths are regrettable, and obviously, we want to try to limit that. But according to the statistics I looked at, we got 1,510 deaths about, in Minnesota. About 80% of them are in our nursing homes and assisted living. So if you subtract the total from the total number of deaths, you subtract the assisted living and nursing home from the total amount of deaths, we're talking 335 deaths outside of nursing homes and assisted living. In our HHS meeting, we were told that of those 335, the vast majority, about 98% of them, had underlying severe health problems. So the point is, is that the majority of our deaths in the state of Minnesota have been tied to people with health problems or in the nursing home and assisted living. Now, if we look at the decision-making that's been made by the governor, it appears he's been trying to protect those who need the least amount of protection, the healthy, and has done a pretty poor job of protecting the ones who need our protection, which is our nursing home, and our people with underlying health problems. But rather than for me to just say that, I would like to share with you an email I got from one of my constituents. His wife works at a nursing home. They currently have four residents with COVID. In addition, three employees have tested positive, who probably caught it from the four residents with COVID. He goes on to say, "One resident was moved to Abbott Hospital about two weeks ago and now is back in the nursing home and in the COVID wing of the nursing home. With hospitals at current, at a minimal capacity, why wouldn't they move them out of the nursing home to protect the rest of the residents there as well as the residents in assisted living and keep hospitals going?" Members, our hospitals have spent millions of dollars getting ready for this wave of COVID-19 patients, which hasn't happened. These nursing home people that have COVID-19 could be kept in a swing bed. The hospitals, many of them in the rural areas especially, are near bankruptcy, even though the essential, non-essential surgeries have been, have been changed, and they've had layoffs in a lot of the hospitals. So putting these COVID patients that are infectious into nursing homes is completely wrong and should be stopped immediately. And yet, the governor and the DHS commissioner continue to justify it. He goes on to say that the hardest thing to deal with is Governor Walz taking away our freedom of choice. Again, this is my constituent. People can choose to gather in large masses, protest, riot, and loot, but we can't choose to go to work and get our economy going. People can't choose to open a business, but we can choose to protest in large masses. That's completely foolish. Again, it's his words, not mine. Members, as far as masks are concerned, I agree with Dr. Michael Osterholm. He was recently interviewed on WCCO, and he said masks, other than the COVID-19 mask, do little to nothing to protect you or the people around you, and that if it makes you feel better, that's fine. So I base my decision not to wear a mask with epidemiologist Dr. Michael Osterholm, which I think is way more qualified than any of us are here on the floor today. Also, members, you know, we talk about protecting the public and saving lives, and we want to save as many lives as possible. But members, if we apply that same reasoning to driving, then we should reduce the speed limit to 10 to 20 miles an hour statewide here in Minnesota. That would save thousands of lives per year besides all the major injuries and physical impairments due to car accidents. But we don't do that, okay? The reason is because we accept a certain amount of risk for economic and personal freedom and responsibility. The same thing applies here with COVID-19. Finally, members, I'd like to share another email I got from a registered health information manager. She wrote this letter to Governor Walz, but I think it's worth sharing with the members. "Let's move on. We have dealt with MERS and SARS. No masks, no quarantine, no shutdown. Influenza kills four times more children than COVID does. No masks, no quarantine, no shutdown of business or schools." So we've had similar infectious diseases in the past that have taken a higher toll of death even on our children in some cases, and yet, we had no masks, no quarantine, and no shutdown of our businesses and schools. Members, we can't live in fear. We're Americans. We're the ones who have taken risk in our life. We want personal responsibility and freedom. We don't want to be micromanaged by a central, centralized planning, one-size-fits-all You know, by ending, by voting to end, well, to have a vote on ending this emergency powers, it will put impetus with Leader Dowd's negotiations and also the other legislative leaders to come up to a way of allowing the governor to address this and yet putting checks and balances on, on his decision-making. Our entire country was founded on the idea of checks and balances. Again, I supported the governor initially to get the hospitals ready, but we keep moving the goalposts, and it seems like the goal is to protect the ones who need the least protection and still allow COVID-19 patients to go into our nursing homes where the chance of infection and death grow exponentially. So let's vote to move forward here. And members, we want to work together on a bipartisan basis, not with one person dictating one-size-fits-all all across this state. Thank you, Madam Speaker and members.
The member from Hennepin, Representative Hassan.
Madam Speaker and members. Madam Speaker and members, it's rather ironic, we keep coming back to the same conversations in the last few months, which is pending the peacetime emergence. Maybe a question for our friends from the other side of the aisle is what happened to all the states that have reopened their economy and ignored the recommendations from the CDC? As we have seen in Florida, Arizona, Louisiana, Texas, and many other states, COVID-19 is far from over. Here are the headlines from NPR yesterday. "Minnesota COVID-19 Update: Forty-two thousand two hundred and eighty-one cases confirmed, seven hundred and fifteen new cases in the last 24 hours, and 1,502 deaths." Minority Leader Dowd said, "We are doing fine. Fifteen hundred lives lost does not, does not sound fine to me, nor does 42,000 cases." Another headline that caught my eye, "Coronavirus continues to surge across the U.S. The U.S. has reported over 3 million coronavirus cases, as all but a handful of states struggle to control outbreaks of COVID-19. One million of those cases have been confirmed over the past month. This is part of a new wave of cases that are the result of many states prematurely reopening their economy in May. More than 130,000 Americans have died from COVID-19, roughly twice the death toll of any other country, according to a tracker from Johns Hopkins University. Most experts believe those numbers fastly underestimate the disease's true toll." There were only two medical doctors that spoke on the House floor tonight, but sure, everyone else seems to be an expert in this manner, and many inaccurate things were echoed in this chamber about numbers, about COVID-19, about science. I don't think the story of crying wolf applies to COVID-19, and I find it very disrespectful to compare lives lost to some children's made-up story. My sincere condolences to every Minnesotan who has lost a loved one due to COVID-19. COVID-19 is real. Science is real, so is data. If these numbers do not concern us, I don't understand what it would take for us to be concerned about this terrible pandemic that's devastating its impact on Minnesotans. The notion that COVID-19 affects everyone equally could not be further from the truth. As the pandemic spreads, alarming evidence suggests that Black, Indigenous, and people of color, as well as socio-economically disadvantaged groups, are bearing a disproportionate burden of COVID-19 cases and deaths. Black, Indigenous, and people of color, and poor people in urban settings, live in more crowded conditions, both by neighborhood and household. Social distancing is a privilege, and living in a small, crowded space disrupts me the ability to isolate safely at home or work remotely, a privilege that we, as legislators, have been comfortably using during this pandemic. My constituencies are dying in an alarming number. My constituencies are contracting COVID-19 at a higher rate. My constituency's lives matter to me. The whole world is on lockdown. We are globally worried in Level IV health advisory, which means do not travel. If the global travel industry, which adds billions, if not trillions, of dollars to the world's economy, is fastly suspended, then tell me why we make a premature decision to endanger people's lives? Someone said, "We don't need a new normal." I disagree with that argument fastly. We indeed need a new normal, as all the normals did not work for people that look like me. It did not address disparities that left behind Black, Indigenous, and people of color in Minnesota. So you bet ya you're good for a new normal, a new normal that allows every Minnesotan to have the opportunity to thrive and build a life that allows them to raise their children in a dignified setting. For the record, the Democrats are using their election certificates to work around the clock to tackle police brutality, systemic racism, poverty, education inequity, civil unrest, homelessness, and many more issues my Republican friends have failed to address in the last four years. It's better to be safe than sorry, they say, and I'd rather we stay on the side of caution than to have our state become a hotbed for COVID-19. I am proud of the leadership of this state and our governor for taking precautions to keep us safe. Therefore, I'm voting no on this motion to suspend the rules, and I hope you will do too. Thank you, Madam Speaker and members.
The member from Hennepin, the Majority Leader, Representative Winkler.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Members, I ask you to vote against the suspension of the rules, to take up the dissolution of the peacetime emergency. I think Representative Hassan's final comments were very much on point, which is the admonition that we should err on the side of caution, because we don't actually know very much about what the coronavirus will do to us, and we don't really know how COVID-19 is going to affect us. We know a few things, or we have some indicators. As Representative Garofalo said, we do know, we do know that density seems to increase the likelihood of transmission, which is why states differ to some degree. We don't really know why Minnesota started with a larger RNa than a lot of other states did. We don't really know exactly how the virus affects your organs, your lungs, why it might accelerate your diabetes. We don't really know why Kawasaki syndrome-like symptoms and conditions seem to be arising in children. There's just so much we don't know. And not knowing makes it really hard to go about your daily life, because we're not used to dealing with something that is so overwhelming and so direct, something that is both global and can put our own family members at risk all at the same time. It is all-consuming, and it is highly uncertain about the best way to deal with it. So erring on the side of caution is probably the safest thing that we can do. We also do know that some of the, some of the actions that we have to take to protect ourselves, our families, and our communities from COVID-19 have consequences. They certainly do, and it is a balancing act that is very difficult to get right. The six months of experience that we have roughly with COVID-19 has revealed a lot of information now that we didn't have then, but I think it is very foolish to think that somehow now we have arrived at the moment where we understand everything about COVID-19, we can make firm policy decisions, we can provide absolute certainty and clarity, we can go about our lives as if we don't know, as if we already know what the next phase of this disease is going to be. We simply don't. We do, we have no idea whether we are in the management phase or in the emergency phase of this disease. There is no way to know that. We have six months of a novel coronavirus under our belt, and that six months has taught us a few things, but not enough. We know that the virus is deadly. We know that the virus is dangerous, even if it isn't deadly in your individual circumstances. As we've talked, or as we've talked about here today, and I mentioned, organ damage, diabetes, moving along more quickly, lung damage, Kawasaki syndrome, rising in children. I've heard more, my nephew had Kawasaki syndrome this spring. Nobody really thought about COVID at the time he got it, but looking back, it seems likely that there's a connection. You're probably hearing more about it from kids around you. That's not data. That isn't statistics. That's anecdotal, but it's certainly reason to be concerned about it. We know that COVID has passed from person to person and that social distancing works. And not only did we see the disease slow down in Minnesota during the stay-at-home order, but we also saw influenza virtually eliminated or dropped so significantly that another disease passed in a similar way, went way down as a result of the stay-at-home order. Is that sustainable in the long run? Probably not. But we do know that social distancing in our lives works, that masks work, and that we need higher percentages of people who are keeping their distance and wearing their masks in order to continue to slow the spread of the disease. And I, you know, I think it's important also that we try to avoid the rhetoric that we've heard on the floor from some members about, frankly, it just feels like base rabble-rousing, trying to make sure that the, you've got the biggest red meat that you can throw to your base as possible, rather than actually trying to think about how to be a responsible leader and understand and explain to people that the uncertainty causes us to have to make decisions, and we can reasonably disagree and reasonably find a way to reach resolution, but throwing a bunch of red meat rhetoric out to the base is not going to help anything. Now that we have a much more robust testing capacity, we can actually start to compare cases as opposed to deaths and hospitalizations. At the beginning, we didn't really have very accurate testing capacity, very accurate data, because testing capacity was so limited. And testing capacity now means that case counts are a pretty good indicator of disease spread. And so when we look at significant increases in case counts in Minnesota and case counts around the country, we should be concerned. It is not enough to say case counts are rising, but death rates aren't, because there is a lot of damage that can happen from COVID-19 that doesn't lead to death. So we should be concerned about that. And we should be very clear with people that you do not want to get the disease. Nobody is better off getting COVID-19. Everybody is better off not getting it, and we need to take actions that are reasonably necessary to prevent its spread. We have to be careful. We have to be cautious. We have to recognize the limits of our knowledge. There is a reasonable debate to be had about the best way for the state to manage it, manage the disease. the disease. It's reasonable to question whether executive authority on its own is the best way. It's reasonable to discuss how the legislature should engage, or whether it should engage, or in what way. We should also recognize their limitations. The governor is acting with the support of the Minnesota Department of Health, the Minnesota Department of Human Services through partnerships with the Mayo Clinic and the University of Minnesota, and has access to resources through the executive branch that we simply do not have. It is reasonable, however, for the legislative branch to demand accountability and oversight, and to be, get a reasonable explanation for the actions taken, and to have an opportunity to weigh in. That is a check and balance that should exist and does exist. Just because we are going to defeat this resolution today, the suspension of the rules, and defeat the resolution from coming to the floor, does not mean that these are illegitimate questions. It simply means that the approach of eliminating the executive orders and the emergency powers right now is irresponsible, dangerous, and will lead to a lot more chaos in the system that we have created. We should give credit where it's due to the leadership of the administration. Their ability to bring together a partnership between the University of Minnesota and Mayo, Hennepin Health, and all of the health providers in Minnesota to coordinate testing and ramp it up to the level we have now is an extraordinary achievement. So we should recognize that work. We should recognize the achievements of our healthcare professionals in figuring out how to address COVID-19 in a clinical setting in a better way without needing to put people on ventilators. And we should identify clearly the shortcomings that we face, the ways in which people are not able to get access to health based on their particular circumstances, whether that's based on wealth, geography, racial bias, or whatever the cause. We need to be able to address those shortcomings. So, members, there is serious, thoughtful, and important work to be done. At times today, the debate has been serious and thoughtful and recognizes the importance of the work, and at times it has been absurd, ridiculous, and based on some peculiar form of science denial and manipulation of evidence to suit your, a political agenda that is simply irresponsible. So if we are able to engage in a thoughtful discussion about executive power, we are open to it, and we are welcome, and we welcome reasonable ideas for the legislature to be involved. That is an approach that can work. However, if that approach leads to this lunatic fringe having a seat at the table to decide health policy in Minnesota at a time of a pandemic, we are not interested. So we can be reasonable, but we are not going to open the door to people who I would never, in a million years, trust the health of my family, or myself, or my community to. So, members, I would ask that we defeat this motion today, we take a week to explore whether or not we can find a better way of addressing coronavirus through legislative involvement and decision-making. I hope that we can. It's reasonable to ask and find a way to do so, but we have to first and foremost protect the health and safety of the people in Minnesota. We have to have the tools in place to do it, and we have to recognize the limits on our knowledge, the limits on our ability to act, and make sure that Minnesotans are not suffering because of our political incompetence. Members, please vote no.
The member from Isanti, the Minority Leader, Representative Dowd.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members, for the spirited debate. I think this issue warrants that sort of debate and that sort of conversation. It warrants hearings, it warrants conversations, and it warrants us all learning a lot more about this. And I say that very sincerely, having just listened to this debate. There's a reason a month ago that I stood here and told you all that I didn't want to give opinion or do any of those things, that I just wanted to talk about facts, facts of things that had actually happened. And what I have heard on the floor today is something that I think is an example of what's happening in our country. Every single issue is so polarized and so politicized, and I can't believe it. Even this, a global pandemic has become a political issue? And I remember people in the past saying, let's just follow the science, let's just follow the data. That's why a month ago I stood at this microphone and just gave you data. For 35 minutes, I went through just raw data. I've got some of that in front of me, I gave some of it at the beginning of the speech. And I heard a lot of people stand up on this floor, or speak on the telephone, and, and say that Republicans believe this, or the other side believes that, not backing up with data, say things that are absolutely factually incorrect. And I can't go on in this conversation, and I want to bring this home and talk about what this debate is really about, and why that's important, and how we should together move forward, because that's what we have to do. But I have to correct the record on some of this, and the first one is the comments that Representative New made, and Representative Liebling said something. All I can think of is that we need to listen to each other. Representative Liebling, you said that Representative New said something she didn't say, and you said the CDC isn't saying that. Representative New, would you please yield for a question? And when you do that, would you stand up and talk to us about what you said and where you got that information? You literally showed it to me, and she read it right off of the front page of the CDC website. She didn't say they were going to eliminate it from being an epidemic. She just read you what was on their website. So Representative New, would you yield?
Representative New, will you yield? She will yield. Representative Dowd, is that your question? Representative New.
Thank you, Leader Dowd. I appreciate the opportunity to set the record straight. Yeah, that was, it was sort of odd. I, certainly words were put in my mouth that were not said, and I want to be very, very clear about what I said, because I, as it turns out, do not have a degree in epidemiology. I don't claim to have a degree in epidemiology, but, good news, I can read. I'm literally on the CDC website, and it says, and I quote, mortality, based on death certificate data, the percentage of deaths attributed to pneumonia, influenza, or COVID-19, all three of those put together, that was my commentary, that they're all three put together, decreased from 6.9% during Week 26 to 5.5% during Week 27, representing the 11th week of a declining percentage of deaths due to PIC, pneumonia, influenza, or COVID. The percentage is currently below the epidemic threshold. Direct quote from the CDC website. I am certainly not claiming that the CDC is going to change how it is viewing COVID. I make no such claims. I am simply reading directly from the CDC website. Thank you, Leader Dowd.
Representative Dowd.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. Thank you, Representative New. I'm shocked that we listened to the debate here, and it kind of tells me we're not listening to each other, and that's what's wrong right now in America. We're not listening to each other. Representative New was really clear. She didn't say, you know, and, and for a chair of a committee to say that she said something she didn't, and, and, you know, and I'm sure it wasn't intentional, and there was a lot said on the floor, so sometimes we maybe don't make notes, and we kind of forget exactly how it was stated. So I'll give you the benefit of the doubt, and I do want to say, Representative Liebling, I'm going to take you up on that offer, and in your inbox, you should have already gotten a copy of the language that I'm working on. There have been some changes, or excuse me, there have been some conceptual ideas or changes talked about since that draft. I want you to look at that, and then I want to follow up with a phone call. I invite working with anybody to come to real conclusion on how we can kind of end the gridlock here and get things, get the relationship between the legislature and the governor restored, so please take me up on that. There were some other things that were just, I got to tell you, the next one really shocks me. I listened, and, and the reason I'm saying this, and the reason I said that this has become such a political issue is because I stood here and gave you just simple facts. And then I listened to a Democrat stand-up who is a medical doctor, who stood up and said that the governor's modeling did not take into account any safety measures. That is absolutely factually wrong, and you are a medical doctor. What that tells me is you either didn't read the modeling, or the assumptions that went into it, or you're in, or you've got political blinders on, or you're intentionally misleading people. That is factually inaccurate. The governor's modeling that predicted 22,000 deaths took into account all of the shutdown, all of the things that we're doing. We can't, Representative Liebling, you are right, we cannot spread misinformation on this House floor, but I heard most of it from your side of the aisle, unfortunately. Representative Considine, please listen. I gave a 35-minute speech a month ago that was all data. In your speech, you were one of the first ones to speak tonight, you said that I said that, that we should be more like Florida and Texas, and that they opened up, and we should do that. It's not at all what my speech was about. I put it online, it went viral. You can watch it. What I said was that Florida and Texas protected the vulnerable and let those who weren't vulnerable go about their business. And to this day, they have only had half the death rate as our peak, back when our peak was, May 28th. That was our peak. They only had, they've only, to this day, had half the death rate of our peak. I didn't say anything about we should open up or not. This whole debate hasn't been about that. This debate isn't about people saying we should open or we shouldn't. This debate isn't about we should be in school or we shouldn't. It's not about COVID won't hurt you, or it will. Everybody who spoke had some sort of misinformation that indicated they weren't listening to their colleagues. Representative Pinto, this emergency has passed. Can't we all agree on that? The emergency has passed. Or, excuse me, he said, can't we all agree that it has not passed, that this, that COVID is the emergency, and that has not passed? We can all agree that COVID has not passed, but this debate today is about ending the state of emergency that exists under Chapter 12. Got my statute book right here on my desk. I'm going to read it to you. Chapter 12, Emergency Management, this is what, this is the section of law that the governor is exercising right now for his emergency powers. And I'm only going to read you one paragraph, I'm not reading the whole thing. Don't get nervous. The definitions, 12.03 subdivision 3, the definition of the word emergency in this section of statute. Emergency means an unforeseen combination of circumstances that calls for immediate action to prevent a disaster from developing or occurring. That definition does not meet the situation that we are in today. It did back in March, but it does not meet the situation that we are in today. We're not in a state of emergency today. We don't need emergency powers by our governor to act quickly. I thanked the governor a month ago when I stood on the House floor, and I appreciate what he did. He, and I do, that's very sincere. I think almost every Minnesotan stood with him and knew that he had difficult decisions to make when he made those initial decisions. And he acted quickly when he needed to act quickly, but he put all that stuff in place. Now we don't need to act quickly. We can move on. We can work together, and that's what we're promoting today. Madam Speaker, before I forget, I'd like to request a roll call on this.
Representative Dowd requests a roll call. Are there 15 hands? Not 15 people in the chamber.
Looks like 15 to me, Madam Speaker.
Not seeing 15 hands in the chamber, we will ask members to send an email from their official House account to hands@house.mn with the word hands in the subject line if they would like a roll call. Seeing 15 hands, there will be a roll call. Representative Dowd.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I just wanted to sneak that in, because sometimes I forget about that stuff when I get on a roll. You know, Representative Winkler, I really do appreciate your comments, and, and I do, I do take you sincerely, I want, and I very much want to find a solution to this. I know this isn't going to pass today, and we're just having some conversation here about why we think it's so important that we, that we get to a conclusion, but my sincere hope is we do get to a conclusion. But Representative Winkler, you even made some, some inferences in, in your comments that, that frankly, we can't make. You said that the stay-at-home order worked. We don't know that it worked. How do we know that? I'm not going to ask you to yield, this isn't, and we don't have time for that. I think we all want to get on with this and have some dinner. But the reality is, we don't know that it worked. And you know why I know that we don't know that it worked? Because on, on March 28th is when the stay-at-home order went into place. And on that, I got to get my glasses out, I apologize. On that day, we had 1,585 tests, we had 18,000 cumulative tests, we had 47 positives that day, we had 685 cumulative positives, we had 13 people in the ICU. We had 17 hospitalizations. And that was on the day that the stay-at-home order went in place. It actually was called for about three days before that, but that's the day it started. So those were the stats on the day it started. If it worked, we would think that, that the numbers wouldn't have gotten worse. But we know two months later is when we actually peaked, you know, and we peaked at 260 people in the ICU. We peaked at 35 deaths in one day, and we've had 1,500 deaths. And maybe what you meant by that is, well, the stay-at-home order, it would have been much worse if we didn't have the stay-at-home order, right? That's certainly a logical thing to say, but there's no evidence to back that up. And the reason I say that is, we can look at the model we have right next door to us in Wisconsin, whose Supreme Court ended their executive orders, their stay-at-home orders, their mask mandates, and everything. And Wisconsin, and this is factual data, is approximately half of the total deaths that we've had, and they have a greater population than we do. So, so we say things here on the floor, and we, we think we can read the data in a certain way, but we're making decisions that we, that really can't be backed up. So we have to be more careful about that. You know, I started this out by saying what Minnesota's death rate was, and, and I say that because so many Democrats stood up on the floor and thanked our governor for doing such a great job. And I appreciate, and I will thank him, for doing things quickly at the beginning. What I can't do is say that he did everything right, and the data shows that. This isn't political. Democrats aren't politicizing this issue. We listened to a painful exchange on the House floor between Representative Garofalo and Representative Howard, painful, where Representative Howard, a Democrat, couldn't admit, after being asked, I should have counted, I didn't count, 10 times at least, I think, can you admit that the states around Minnesota have a lower death total than Minnesota? Minnesota, 27 deaths per, this is total deaths, per 100,000 people of population, so it's adjusted, so they're comparable, apples to apples with everyone in the country. Minnesota, 27. Iowa, 24. Wisconsin, who's been open for, I don't know, five, six, seven weeks now, 14. They're literally half of what we are. South Dakota, 12. North Dakota, 11. And you all heard about Florida, right? 20. They are lower than Minnesota by about 25 or 30%. How could that be? We're hearing about them in the news, right? And the interesting thing is, the pandemic hit Florida much earlier than it hit Minnesota, so they've had a lot longer time. This is a death total number. They still have not hit half of our death, our peak death rate, still, to this day. Texas, 11. Texas is, is just like North Dakota, 11 total deaths per 100,000 people. Isn't it interesting how the media used to report deaths? And somebody brought up earlier, why do you talk about deaths? That's not relevant. It's the one certain thing. It's the one number that we can't fudge, right? We can't fudge ICU numbers, we can't fudge deaths. How many positives? That's a good number. We know how many positives we had, but we also know we're testing exponentially more people right now. So of course we have more positives, but if we don't see But if we don't see ICU numbers increase and we don't see deaths increase, what that tells me is, we actually had that many more positives back then, we just didn't know about it. That's what it tells us. And the reason that this vote is so important, it's not about COVID. It's not about whether COVID is dangerous or not. This vote is about, is what's going on in Minnesota right now an emergency? Is this something that requires the governor to act unilaterally and very quickly without waiting for the delay of legislative hearings and the legislative process? That's what this debate is about. I read to you what the emergency definition is under Chapter 12, that he has executed and he's operating under. That emergency doesn't exist. A member suggested that, can't we all agree that the emergency is, is still existing and is gonna go on for a long time? No, we can't. COVID exists. COVID can be very dangerous. And COVID will be around for a long time. But it doesn't mean we can't continue to live our lives, and we can't do that safely. But COVID, according to the definition and law that we're debating today, is not an And the reason these decisions are important right now is because there are some decisions that are being considered. We've heard members talk about a mask mandate. Or the governor's gonna make a decision by the 27th, I think, it's the 14th now, on whether or not kids will go to school in the fall. But he's gonna do that by himself under his emergency powers. The legislature's in session right now. Democrats haven't authored a bill or had a hearing in our Education Committee about whether kids should be in school in the fall. Republicans have. We introduced a bill about that, that it should be a local decision. This debate isn't about whether masks are, should be required or not required, or whether kids should be in school or should not be in school. This debate is about, should this legislature be involved in that process? Or are those decisions, now I grant you, we know that this decision on the schools is gonna be made on the 27th of, of July, and it's the 14th now. And we're in session. Is that an emergency that we can't weigh in on? That's the decision you're making today, and that's the debate that we're having. Very interesting study about schools. I'm just gonna read it to you, it's really short. This was in, in the news, I printed it out today, but it was in the news yesterday. And it's, it's entitled, "German Study Finds No Evidence Coronavirus Spreads in Schools." It's the title. They actually found that one, one case spread in the schools, but you'll get the gist when I read it. Scientists from Dresden Technical University said they believe children may act as a break on chains of infection. Professor Reinhard Berner, the head of pediatric medicine at Dresden University Hospital and leader of the study, said the results suggested the virus does not spread easily in schools. It's rather the opposite, he said. Children act more as a break on infection. Not every infection reaches them, is passed on. The study tested 2,045 children and teachers at 13 schools, including some where there had been cases of the virus. But scientists found antibodies in just 12 of those who took part. This means that the degree of immunization in the group of study participants is well below 1% and much lower than we expected, said Professor Berner. This suggests schools have not developed into hotspots. The study was carried out at schools in three different districts in the region of Saxony. The choice of Saxony is significant because it was the only one of Germany's 16 states to reopen schools with full class sizes in May. The decision was highly controversial at the time. Parents won the right to keep their children at home after a legal challenge, and the regional government ordered the study to determine whether the policy had been right. The findings are likely to be subject of much public debate in Germany, with full class sizes planned to resume at schools across the country after the summer holidays. The study tested the blood of around 1,500 children, between 14 and 18, and 500 teachers aged between 30 and 66 for antibodies to the virus. Five of those who took part had previously tested positive for the virus. The author, the author said that only seven others were found to have antibodies. When you look at those numbers, I mean, these are, these are clinical studies ordered by the, the government of Germany, on large populations of people. There is a lot, I agree with you, Representative Winkler, that we don't know about this virus, but we have learned an awful lot in the last three months. And unfortunately, because of our party persuasion, we look at it completely differently. What I wanna do is ask every member of this chamber and everybody at home to just look at the facts. And if somebody says something to you, challenge them on it. Does the data really back that up? There is one thing we know about this. In Minnesota, we've had 1,505 or 7 deaths total, something like that. And we know that approximately 80% of those deaths have come in congregate care facilities, while the majority of the cases have actually been in folks in the 20 to 30 to 40 range. And if you look at the actual data, the, I said this in my speech a month ago, that if you are in a congregate care facility, this virus is 2,000 to 3,000 times more severe for you than if you are under the age of 30. And that number gets higher if you're under the age of 20, which would be our school-age There is no real evidence to suggest that kids get this disease, or this virus in any, in any large numbers, and that they transmit it in any large numbers. We're talking about thousands of times difference. Now, I know that's really odd, because usually the flu affects either the very young or the very old. This one is not like that, and we know that. This one affects elderly people and, and folks who have severe underlying conditions. But I walk around in, in society and I talk to people, friends of mine, and, and just, you know, I see, I'm sure we all do on Facebook and, and social media, how concerned people are. They're scared. We're scaring them. I don't know, we are, but I said it in my opening speech, the governor is. When you tell people that 78,000 Minnesotans are gonna die from COVID, that scares the hell out of people. When you tell people that 22,000 Minnesotans are going to die and, and 500 per day are going to die, that scares the hell out of people. But yesterday, when the governor predicted 500 people would die, two died, two. What we need to do, what we must do, is return the legislature to a, to a equal partner in managing our response to COVID-19 in this state. And I'm gonna plead with members of the other party, please, just listen to what we're saying. I didn't say, don't wear your mask. I have one right here in my pocket. I wear it when I'm required to, or when I'm gonna be within six feet of people and I don't feel, you know, I wanna protect them. I don't particularly care, because I know I'm really healthy. And I've got lots of friends who've had, who've been positive and have gotten COVID and have recovered fully, and it was like the flu. I'm not worried about myself, but I do wear it out of respect for other people. Do I wear it all the time? No. Do I like to wear it? No. I bet none of us like to wear it. But I bet some of us are really proud to wear it, because we know we're helping other people. And that's great. But please, 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 let's not scare people. There is no reason and no data suggests that, that we need to lock down schools. There's nothing that's happening in Minnesota right now in any of our data, and I read it all for you, that suggests we should be putting a mask mandate in place. But apparently, those are the things that our chief executive is considering. What is he seeing that we're not seeing? That's what this debate is about. It's not about whether masks are safe or whether kids should be in school. Parents seem to understand that yesterday we had two deaths, not 500. They seem to now be understanding that, yes, kids can safely be back in school, and teachers can be safe there, too. And I think more than anything, they understand that that's not a one-size-fits-all decision, that that's a state, the state should be giving the local school districts the decision to, to decide whether they can have in-person classes and what protection measures they will put in place to keep people safe. Those are local decisions, not a one-size-fits-all. We've heard people say in the chamber today that this governor has always taken into account regional, you know, what he has done is put one-size-fits-all parameters in place. If Representative Consoigne had paid, had actually paid attention to my speech a month ago, he would have known that what I said was, what I didn't want was a one-size-fits-all. What Florida did was they decided, we're not gonna just lock down everybody, we're gonna really protect the vulnerable, we're not gonna put positive, COVID-positive patients into nursing homes, and if, if they test positive in there, we're gonna pull them out and put them somewhere else, just for a short time while they recover. And their death rate still has not reached half of our death rate. Public policy matters. The way we respond to this pandemic matters. Yep, they're seeing, they're seeing case increases right now. Why? Because they're testing more people. But their deaths aren't spiking right now. And they still haven't reached half of ours. Texas still hasn't reached 1/3 of our death rate. And did our stay-at-home order work? We don't know. I hope that at some point, we will have hearings on this stuff. Let's have a hearing. Representative Liebling, let's have a hearing on the, on the modeling, so that our medical doctor can understand that that modeling actually took into account the fact, all of the protection measures were accounted for in that model. The stay-at-home order, the, the, the social distancing, that was all accounted for in the model. Members of your own party don't understand the actual, just simple facts and simple data behind this, because we haven't had hearings on it. And I think you're taking for granted that people do understand it. The misinformation that I heard today on this floor is evidence enough that we should be having hearings. And I tell you, I am very sincerely working to, to come to a reasonable conclusion where the legislature can be restored to being a partner with the governor in responding to this. And I invite all of you, I invite your feedback, I've made a ton of changes to my language already, conceptually, I think we have some more thought out. But what I won't do is allow us to continue where the governor can just run unfettered and unchecked with a one-size-fits-all model for all of Minnesota. And one-size-fits-all doesn't just mean, as I explain geographically, it also means age and setting. We don't need to treat school kids the way we treat people in a nursing home. If we haven't learned anything from this, we should have learned that. But this debate is about whether we will have a part in that decision. So I plead with you to allow that to happen. This vote that we are on, just if you wanna know if this is political, we were called back here for one reason and one reason only. To have a vote to decide if we're gonna end the governor's emergency powers. That's the only reason we are here. And because I know how this works, the majority leader just stood up and asked people to vote against a suspension of the rules, which would allow that to come up. For those of you that are watching at home, what that means is, this issue is so partisan that Democrats are not even going to allow a vote on that issue here on the House floor, and it's the only reason this session has been called. Democrats, I'm gonna say it again, this is such a partisan issue for Democrats, and they have to defend the governor, that they're not even going to allow a vote on whether to end his emergency powers here on the House floor. And it's the only reason we've been called in. Has the governor done a good job? He did a good job early on, acting early. What he didn't do was learn over the course of time and, and, and respond differently with, with a, you know, multi-point reaction. Everything he has done has been one-size-fits-all, and it has not worked. The data that it has not worked is clear. There is no question about that. And it's just simple data. Are there states that have been worse than us? Yes, there are. There are five states on the East Coast where this was really bad. They were multiple times worse than us. But I will remind you that the governor's modeling predicted that we would be multiple times worse than them, and that didn't come to fruition. Most states in this country, and this is a very accurate statement based on the actual data, most states of this country, in this country, have responded to COVID better than we have. Most states have. There are a few that have been worse than us, but most have done a better job than us. Let's not continue with a one-size-fits-all and one person making all the decisions. Let's level the playing field. And let's have a, a seat at the table where the decisions are being made, and let's start having hearings. This is too important. So I'm gonna make one last plea. Please vote to suspend the rules, so that we can at least vote on the motion to end the emergency powers. Let's at least, I understand you may not wanna have hearings, you may not wanna do all the other stuff that I think we should be doing, that's our job to do. But we were called here for one reason. Let's at least do what we're here for. And if you vote no on this motion to suspend the rules, you will be blocking us from voting on ending the emergency powers, which is the only reason we're here. And folks watching at home, I want you to watch right now with the results of this vote, on whether this is a partisan issue. This isn't about ending COVID or, or ending shutdowns. This is literally just about working together. The people who vote green want to work together with the governor, and the people who vote red want the governor to continue doing it all, one-size-fits-all, on his own. So you can see for yourselves at home, whether, whether COVID-19 in Minnesota is a partisan issue. Please do the right thing. Let's do the job that Minnesotans have elected us to do, and let's please, at least do the one thing that we've been called here to do, the only thing that we've been called here to do. Do the right thing.
Hearing no further discussion and a roll call having been requested, the clerk will take the roll on the suspension of the rules.
Acem.
Acem, no.
Acem, no. Albright. Albright, aye. Anderson.
Anderson, aye.
Anderson, aye. Bacher.
Bacher, aye.
Bacher, aye. Bonner.
Bonner, no.
Bonner, no. Barr.
Barr, aye.
Barr, aye. Baker.
Baker, yes.
Baker, aye. Becker, fin. Becker, fin, no. Bennett.
Bennett, aye.
Bennett, aye. Bernardi.
Bernardi, no.
Bernardi, no. Bierman.
Bierman, no.
Bierman, no. Bo. Bo, aye. Brand.
Brand, votes, no.
Brand, no. Cantrell.
Cantrell, no.
Cantrell, no. Carlson, a.
Carlson, a, no.
Carlson, a, no. Carlson, l.
Carlson, l, no.
Carlson, l, no. Christensen.
Christensen, no.
Christensen, no. Claflin.
Claflin, no.
Claflin, no. Consoigne.
Consoigne, no.
Consoigne, no. Daniels.
Daniels, aye.
Daniels, aye. Dowd. Dowd, aye. Davids.
Davids, aye.
Davids, aye. Daphne.
Daphne, no.
Daphne, no. Dean.
Dean, no.
Dean, no. Damuth.
Damuth, aye.
Damuth, aye. Detmer.
Detmer, aye.
Detmer, aye. Drazkowski. Draskowski. Draskowski, aye. Eklund.
Eklund, no.
Eklund, no. Edelson.
Edelson, no.
Edelson, no. Elkins.
Elkins, no.
Elkins, no. Ericsson.
Ericsson, aye.
Ericsson, aye. Fabian.
Fabian, aye.
Fabian, aye. Fisher.
Fisher, no.
Fisher, no. Franzen.
Franzen, aye.
Franzen, aye. Freiberg.
Freiberg, no.
Freiberg, no. Garofalo.
Garofalo, aye.
Garofalo, aye. Gomez.
Gomez, no.
Gomez, no. Green.
Green, aye.
Green, aye. Gressel.
Gressel, aye.
Gressel, aye. Grunhagen.
Grunhagen, aye.
Grunhagen, aye. Gunther.
Gunther, aye.
Gunther, aye. Haley.
Haley, aye.
Haley, aye. Halverson. Halverson, no. Hamilton.
Hamilton, aye.
Hamilton, aye. Hanson.
Hanson, no.
Can you be quiet for a second?
Hanson, no. Hassan.
Hassan, no.
Hassan, no. Hausmann.
Hausmann, no.
Hausmann, no. Heinrich.
Heinrich, aye.
Heinrich, aye. Heinzmann.
Heinzmann, aye.
Heinzmann, aye. Herr.
Herr, no.
Herr, no. Hertas.
Hertas, aye.
Hertas, aye. Hornstein.
Hornstein, no.
Hornstein, no. Howard.
Howard, no.
Howard, no. Hewitt.
Hewitt, no.
Hewitt, no. Johnson.
Johnson, aye.
Johnson, aye. Jordan.
Jordan, no.
Jordan, no. Juergens.
Juergens, aye.
Juergens, aye. Keel.
Keel, aye.
Keel, aye. Cleavorn.
Cleavorn, no.
Cleavorn, no. Kegel.
Kegel, no.
Kegel, no. Katisa Wittoon.
Katisa Wittoon, no.
Katisa Wittoon, no. Koznick.
Koznick, aye.
Koznick, aye. Kresha.
Kresha, aye.
Kresha, aye. Kunish Podeen.
Kunish Podeen, no.
Kunish Podeen, no. Lehman.
Lehman, aye.
Lehman, aye. Lee.
Lee, no.
Lee, no. Lesch.
Lesch, no.
Lesch, no. Liebling.
Liebling, no.
Liebling, no. Lean.
Lean, no.
Lean, no. Lilly.
Lilly, no.
Lilly, no. Lippert.
Lippert, no.
Lippert, no. Listlegard.
Listlegard, aye.
Listlegard, aye. Long.
Long, no.
Long, no. Lucero.
Lucero, yes.
Lucero, aye. Lewick.
Lewick, aye.
Lewick, aye. Mahoney.
Mahoney, no.
Mahoney, no. Mann.
Mann, no.
Mann, no. Mariani.
Mariani, no.
Mariani, no. Markwart.
Markwart, aye.
Markwart, aye. Mason.
Mason, no.
Mason, no. McDonald.
McDonald, aye.
McDonald, aye. Mecklen.
Mecklen, aye.
Mecklen, aye. Miller.
Miller, aye.
Miller, aye. Moller.
Moller, no.
Moller, no. Moran.
Moran, no.
Moran, no. Morrison.
Morrison, no.
Morrison.
Morrison, no.
Morrison, no. Munson.
Munson, aye.
Munson, aye. Murphy.
Murphy, no.
Murphy, no. Nash.
Nash, aye.
Nash, aye. Nelson M.
Nelson M, no.
Nelson M, no. Nelson N.
Nelson N, aye.
Nelson N, aye. New. New, aye. Nor.
Nor, no.
Nor, no. Nornis.
Nornis, aye.
Nornis, aye. Navatni.
Navatni, aye.
Navatni, aye. O'Driscoll.
O'Driscoll, aye.
O'Driscoll, aye. Olson.
Olson, no.
Olson, no. O'Neill.
O'Neill, aye.
O'Neill, aye. Palowski.
Palowski, aye.
Palowski, aye. Purcell.
Petersburg, aye.
Petersburg, aye. Pearson.
Pearson, aye.
Pearson, aye. Pinto.
Pinto, no.
Pinto, no. Poppy.
Poppy, no.
Poppy, no. Poston.
Poston, aye.
Poston, aye. Pryor.
Pryor, no.
Pryor, no. Quam.
Quam, aye.
Quam, aye. Richardson.
Richardson, no.
Richardson, no. Robbins. Robbins, aye. Runbeck.
Runbeck, aye.
Runbeck, aye. Sandell.
Sandell, no.
Sandell, no. Sansdett.
Sansdett, aye.
Sansdett, aye. Sauk.
Sauk, no.
Sauk, no. Schumacher.
Schumacher, aye.
Schumacher, aye. Schultz, excused. Scott.
Scott, aye.
Scott, aye. Stevenson.
Stevenson, no.
Stevenson, no. Sundin.
Sundin, no.
Sundin, no. Swazinski.
Swazinski, aye.
Swazinski, aye. Tabkey.
Tabkey, no.
Tabkey, no. Tice.
Tice, aye.
Tice, aye. Torkelson.
Torkelson, aye.
Torkelson, aye. Erdol.
Erdol, aye.
Erdol, aye. Vang.
Vang, no.
Vang, no. Vogel.
Vogel, aye.